Call to order the August twenty second, twenty twenty-three regular meeting Wellington Board of Trustees. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Paton McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Chelsea.
Here.
Thank you, Eva Coram.
Are there any amendments to this in this evening's agenda? No. Are there any conflicts of interest with this evening's agenda? No. All right, next, we will proceed to public comment. Individuals who can speak on non-agenda items are asked to sign up on the form on the podium. And then when at the podium, please speak into the microphone, state your name for the record. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Please know that if any person desires to make a statement regarding the Planning Commission decision on June fifth, twenty twenty-three, site plan approval, that this board cannot consider any comments at this time. There's an appeal hearing scheduled for the twenty-third of August and will require the Board of Trustees to act in a quasi-judicial role as it is considering the Planning Commission's decision for the June fifth, twenty twenty-three site plan. To ensure that all parties' due processes rights are protected, we will not permit any public comment related to that meeting or that decision at this time. There's an established process and we need to abide by the law when it comes to consider the appeal. We cannot take any comments on that topic into account, so please help us get through this meeting without issue.
Christine Gator. Governor Polis signed a Senate Bill twenty-three dash one oh eight. It is a Senate bill that allows local government to temporarily reduce property taxes. Since property taxes went up forty to sixty percent, I just thought it would be nice if the town was willing to maybe only go up twenty to thirty percent half that. So still, you know, you you'd get more property tax, but giving the citizens a break would be nice, especially with in the forty to sixty percent of property tax is huge to increase someone in a year. But then also, you know, considering that the water bills has gone up and people are complaining about that, so just wanted to pass this along. Just something for you guys to think about. I know it's coming up with the budget and all, and I just wanted to put that by you and ask that you think about just reducing it a little bit to help the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Eifert. I live in the Knowles. I came here today because I had talked to our sheriff, John Fain, last year before he got elected about doing something about like a barbecue for the special needs population that are here in Wellington to meet our local Lorimer County Sheriff's officers who patrol this area. There's been a lot of instances about children and young adults being killed in the presence of a police officer because that police officer was not familiar with what some of the disabilities look like. With a neurotypical person, you can give them commands and they should be able to follow. And with a person that's not neurotypical, you can give that command and they'll think you want a flashlight. So that's the best way I have to describe that. And so I think it's super important for our sheriff's officers to be able to be familiar with the people we have living in Wellington that have special needs, what their needs are, and maybe a better way to speak to them so that those children and adults can be heard and they can understand as well. And it's highly rated in the country that children with special needs are deathly afraid of police officers or sheriffs or whatever that is. And that's because their whole life, they've been told, if you screw up, you might get shot. If you screw up, they're going to kick your butt. Those are things that even my children were told. My eighteen-year-old son, that we had to pull him out of Prutter High School because of the violence that was on the bus. My other child that's fourteen years old, he's also still homeschool now, even after the shutdown because he had so many problems with those types of things happening at school. I think it's the most important thing that I can do as an advocate for special needs people in this world to get those two populations together, to learn how to speak each other's language, to recognize each other and recognize a threat was not a threat all the time and how to be able to talk to each other. So in speaking with Sheriff Fain, we'd like to pull something together, probably in September. We're doing that strategically because a lot of these children have special needs, also have other medical needs that pop on board and they can't be out in the heat and they can't be out in the direct sunlight. So we're hoping that we can maybe partner with the town of Wellington, maybe have some sponsorship. I remember there was money left over in the Board Discretionary Fund from the meetings I attended. Maybe we can get help from there. But also to have our town staff that were trained in ADA come and help do some of that bringing bridging together to start that communication between the two populations. I would be love to be there. I'd like for Trustee Teets to be there, but I'd also like another member of the board here today to attend that. I think it'd be really wonderful for you to learn the language as well and to just intermingle with these people. I'd love for the special needs people in this town to be able to walk down the street and go, oh, hi, Trustee Gator, hi, Trustee Mason. Or if they can't do a whole name, they might just call you Brian, or they'll call you David. That happens a lot. But we would really like to get this done in September, and that's when John Fain had time. And so I'm just coming in and asking for the town to maybe help us in sponsorship from the Board Discretionary Fund and to let us use Centennial Park at some time we agree on in September. It's going to be seventies to eighties, but we need to do it in the evenings and it'll be the barbecue as dinner time for them because a lot of them have certain routines and therapies that they have to go to daily. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move on to a presentation, building permit growth update and utility rate impact discussion given by Mr. Cody Byrd, Bob Gowing and Megan Smith.
Good evening. I'm Bob Gowing. I'm the Director of Public Works and this presentation's a bit of a tag team. Megan and Cody did most of the heavy lifting and because of that, they got to make me get up here and talk first. So that's how that went. But we, you know, we, when we dove into this, we started putting a lot of detail into this presentation and it occurred to us today that we really didn't didn't provide an explanation for why we're giving you all this information. So I did want to touch on that. Our overall goals for this presentation were to really provide information on areas related to growth and associated impacts to the town that might or might not be relative to future decisions. We're not really looking for any decisions tonight. This is strictly a presentation. And the components of that are a comparison of actual growth and by growth, I'm primarily talking about building permits. That's where the impact fee money comes into the town as long with the building permit typically. And the the actual growth versus the growth projections that were included in the budget and in the rate study, as I think most of y'all might recall, and the potential impacts to the town's financial health that might result from those, the difference between actual growth and projected growth. And for the utility, which we're using as kind of a stand-in for the town as a whole because utility is a big part of our budget, obviously. There's three primary revenue sources and this just kind of reminder, there's current ratepayers. There's future ratepayers who buy the houses that are sold by developers and become our customers. And of course, there's impact fees that are paid by the developers themselves. So along those lines, so we, we again threw a lot of information out to you. We'll, we'll have questions, we'll have opportunities for questions kind of after each section. If you have a question that's just burning you up, feel free to, feel free to ask. But it might be best to kind of let us get through a section and then we could, we cover the questions at that time. So where have we been? Everybody knows we've got big expansion projects that the whole town got behind and we funded those through loans. And as part of that, we also managed our relationship with existing developers and and that was very much a cooperative effort to kind of manage the amount of building permits that were pulled so that we would be able to maintain capacity, ability to serve until the new plants were online. Those new plants are on track from budget point of view and a schedule point of view. So we thought this might be a good time to give an update on kind of the bigger topics. And we all know that we went through several roundtables and lots and lots of discussion with the board about the rates and and the nature of those plant expansions in general. Just as a reminder, we're, we're doubling our water and sewer capacity with these two projects. We currently have about eleven thousand people. So you do the math, we're paying for right now for the expansion to serve about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand people in the future, about twice our growth, our current population. So those revenue projections, which are based on the growth projections, we have to make in order to understand what our revenue might look like. Those are made, I'm not going to say they made in the dark, but they're made with the best available data that we have at that time. And we've made those projections for all the budgets that we presented in the past. We use those same projections for the rate study and for really all the financial things that we, that we do and bring to you guys for approval. So I guess I'll, I'll leave the punchline for later, but really just say that you know, I'm not going to go through everything in here. I don't think you want me to read this presentation, but that's really kind of just the start. So right now I'm going to turn it over to Cody, who's going to talk in a little bit more detail about, about the growth.
Thanks, Bob. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. And this was one of Bob's slides that he's already kind of covered in a general sense there in his introduction. So purposeful growth, this is a term that we've heard a couple of times over the last couple of years. The, the term actually came out of our comprehensive plan, public information gathering process. We were hearing a lot of resident concerns that the town has experienced unprecedented growth. I have a chart later in here. If you've read through the package, you've probably seen it. We'll touch on it here in a moment. Illustrating that, that unprecedented historical growth of the town. And, you know, we've had a change in staff. We've had a lot of other turnovers and we started looking much more intentionally at development decision-making processes, the timing of those processes, how it affects and relates to the town's budget and revenue streams. And there is a very strong correlation between a small and growing community with those growth projections and our budgets and revenues. And that's really the, the meat of what this presentation's about. But just to kind of provide a little bit further, further background, when we started doing the comprehensive plan update, it was at about the same time that the town was also looking at a water expansion or water treatment plant expansion project, pointing the wrong way. It's over here. And in evaluating options for the water treatment plant expansion project, we also identified, well, water in equals water out. We need to also evaluate our wastewater treatment facility. And so starting that process four or five years ago, we identified a series of, of, of challenges that the community was going to face and growth was at the heart of all of them, both cause and the, and the consequence and possibly the, the way out. So in, in identifying those challenges, we've put ourselves on a path to pay for these major expansion projects that, that Mr. Gowing just alluded to. And they're underway and my second bullet point there, they're on schedule. We anticipate those being completed in fall of twenty-four. And that's holding true so far through the construction processes. Before we got to that point, though, the town was bumping up against a, a critical threshold for treatment capacity at both of those plants. And that was at a time when the town had already approved a number of significant development projects that were under construction, underway, and developers leveraging construction loans to make the public infrastructure happen for those projects. The town took pretty dramatic actions to limit the number of building permits that could be issued annually to stay within the town's treatment capacity for both our water and wastewater treatment facilities. And that was during a time of unprecedented growth with market conditions very favorable for development. And we had to deliver some pretty challenging messages to our development community to protect the town's investments in our plants. We were successful in managing those relationships with those developers to not exceed the town's treatment capacity of either our water treatment plant or wastewater treatment plant, protect the town's utilities. We're with the treatment plants on schedule for completion. We don't anticipate that those limitations will still be needed. There's probably a, a need at this point to start looking at things a little bit differently in terms of continuing to protect the town. And as such, we're going to dive into how the town's growth and building permits relates to revenue streams. So I wanted to start with giving you kind of an update on our building permits for, and this is focused primarily on residential because that's the most consistent and reliable stream of information that we can rely on. We still get commercial permits. We've done a, a big part of our process over the last couple of years is ensuring that commercial growth can still happen and protecting the ability for the town to issue commercial building permits for new commercial developments, which we have done. But it doesn't indicate, it's not a very strong indicator of, of growth and revenue for the town in terms of water treatment. So we focus on residential building permits. So this slide comes out of a, a report that I've generated and you've seen a couple of times already. The only thing I added was a little bit of text here for what was actual and what's projected. That wasn't on your prior report. This is from the quarterly building permit report. But you can see in, in years, leading up to twenty sixteen, the town was on a steady, steady progression of, of residential building permits being issued to a peak year in twenty sixteen of three hundred and forty-three residential units. And in two thousand seventeen, that started to dip a little bit just naturally as projects were being built out. But in two thousand eighteen and nineteen is when we had to start taking a hard look at comprehensive master plans, infrastructure for our plants. And in twenty twenty, we started taking hard line looks at water rates, raw water contribution requirements, shares instead of cash, limitations on building permits to constrain and protect our plants. That twenty twenty year has a spike in it, not because of the, the market demand was there, but there was also other policy changes being or taking place that resulted in developers pulling a large number of permits to beat the fee increases, if you will. And that pattern's been demonstrated a couple of times in the towns passed when new policies and fees were changing, development reacts to that. But in twenty twenty-one, you can see that had a very dramatic effect on the number of residential permits that we've been issuing to stay within our limitations. We had projected a hundred and twenty-one permits that year and we actually issued a hundred and thirteen. Twenty twenty-two was another year that we were lower than what we projected from a revenue standpoint. So we've consistently been under that. And in twenty twenty-three, we projected eighty permits would be residential permits would be issued in twenty twenty-three. And we are not on pace to meet that revenue projection either. I just highlighted in blue there, the future projection here is that those numbers are consistent throughout our infrastructure and planning documents in terms of what we expected growth to, to look like from a residential standpoint. So we're using the same numbers year over year. And what we're seeing, that trend is starting to be lower than we predicted year over year. So this next slide kind of illustrates that, that particular point. You can see, as I was alluding to a moment ago, twenty twenty-one projected a hundred and twenty-one permits and issued a hundred and thirteen, twenty-two ninety-nine were projected, eighty-two were issued. Twenty-three were, year to date, were at thirty-seven when we anticipated eighty. And it's just below the, the, the text box there that's capturing the what we're saying to, for ADA compliance, but what you see in the packet is the percent variance that we've calculated for twenty twenty-one was seven percent lower than projected, twenty-two was seventeen percent lower than projected and year to date, we are fifty-four percent lower than projected for building permits, which has a corresponding reduction in revenues from those one-time fees being impact fees, water contributions. Stems beyond or extends beyond just the utilities. It impacts our general fund also for one-time fees from building material use tax, permit revenues and other things. As well as the number of new residents that would be contributing to rates, which were also calculated in our rate adjustments that Ms. Smith's going to get to in just a moment. So if you sum that up, the very bottom line, which again, you can't see on, on this screen is a, on average, we're seeing about twenty-five, twenty-six percent less than projected building permits, which has a corresponding effect on revenues. This next slide here, again, this is from a, from a, the twenty or from the quarterly building permit report. And this is a, a tool that town staff is tracking. We've been tracking it for quite a while and it's a tool that we use to help manage our development pipeline. As you can see, there, there's a couple of subdivisions there with strike throughs through them. Those subdivisions are completely built out. There's no more permits remaining in those subdivisions. There's a few infill lots and then we have our, our primary areas of development for active development projects being Columbia Estates, which only has, at the time of this report, was twenty-nine lots left that could issue permits. And that they've pulled a couple since then, so it's down to twenty-one for the remainder of that subdivision. Sedge Meadows, second subdivision, we have a list of this phase one and phase two. The developer is currently developing all of those lots simultaneously for public infrastructure. That's going to add a hundred and three residential lots to our development pipeline. Once infrastructure is in place, we'd be able to issue permits there. We anticipate that beginning sometime this fall, first couple of permits. But when we're projecting, look at the prior, the prior slides, a hundred and fifty permits in twenty-four, a hundred and eighty-three permits in twenty-five. A hundred and three permits doesn't cover two years' worth of, of expected revenues. Something else that's worth pointing out here, Sundance subdivision. And we have phases listed as more previously approved nearly twenty years ago for that subdivision. We don't anticipate that that's going to, it doesn't have any clear timeline for beginning construction. The owner of that property recently put a center pivot for irrigation on it, which is a pretty strong indicator that it's not going to develop in the next five to ten years. Their intentions have been made pretty clear through their actions. So that's three hundred and seventeen permits that we pretty much just take off the top that those aren't going to be available in the near future. So according to this chart, six hundred and seven plotted lots, thirty-four with ready for permits. Those numbers continue to go down as we issue additional permits and they're not going up if we don't have additional development approvals. So this is the tool that we're using to track kind of status of where we stand. And we manage this on a near weekly basis, just to kind of keep tabs on how things are moving. And this last slide here is I, the note at the bottom, that is what I just, just indicated that Sundance subdivision has an indefinite hold on it. But we've kind of modeled the, those, the town's stats that we've tracked since two thousand twenty when we first started implementing some of our changes to address this purposeful growth scenario that we're in. And you can see that the trend lines for the number of lots that are plotted versus the number of lots that are able to issue building permits and obtain revenues from. You see a dashed line there. We essentially just took out Sundance subdivision out of the equation and that has a pretty dramatic impact on our availability. Two hundred and ninety lots is going to sustain about two years' worth of projected growth in revenues. So with that, I'm going to let Megan step up here, I'm Ms. Smith, excuse me, to speak to the revenue side of that.
Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. So as we talked about, as we move into have a lot of charts, right? So graphics are much easier to talk through with some of these numbers than looking at a table of information. First thing that I do want to touch on though, just give a little bit of background related to utility rates, how we are, have utilized the growth projections, both in our utility rates and impact fee discussions with the board. The board did approve in twenty, April of twenty twenty-two to go under contract with Raftellus, which is a company that we brought in to contract with to do a rate and fee study. So a full water wastewater utility rate study as well as associated impact fees for development. The main outcomes, the main purpose of those studies, of course, ensure financial stability of both utilities, ensure that rates and fees are recovering cost proportionally. But also we were very diligent about making sure that we align the recommendations that we came to the board with, with the community feedback that we heard through several rounds of, of rate roundtables. The outcomes of, of that study did, of course, result in updated rate structures across all of our customer classes for both water and wastewater and updated impact fees or tap fees, plant investment fees. Those are all in context, virtually the same thing we're talking about here. A couple of other recommendations that came out of that study that was presented to the board at the time was that Raftellus did embed the need for or looking at the consideration for a five percent annual increase in rates for the next five years for both water and wastewater, along with a four percent annual increase in impact fees. And even with those annual increases, and we can go back and look at that, those reports and that, that pack of material that was presented to the board, we were still in a situation where we would be in a planned deficit spending situation for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. And that's not catastrophic or unheard of or overly scary. That's why we have a fund balance. That's why we're smart with our money decision-making. But regardless of that, we are, we're, we are already set up to be stepping into a, a deficit spending situation for those several years in both the water and the wastewater fund. Now, there are several variables that can impact rate and fee revenues. Some of them are a little bit in our control. Many of them are completely not in our control. Weather is one that we're experiencing this year, less impact, of course, on impact fees, but definitely can have an impact on our rate revenue. Customer behavior that can come in, you know, changing landscaping, updating appliances in your house, over or under irrigating. Those are some things that the community, the town can influence through education, through opportunities, but fundamentally, we don't have a, a, a hard lever that we can do anything about that, right? But we can try through education to influence. Growth and development, we definitely don't have a lever on demand, right? Housing market demand, we're, we're not in control of that. However, we can influence the ability or influence the, the capacity that the town can have for growth opportunities. Market conditions, that one's pretty far outside our control. Interest rates, inflation, regional, state level, national and beyond. There's not a lot we can do in this room to influence that. We're, we're reacting to it, generally speaking. All of those variables and, and many more, but those are kind of the primary drivers that can have a lot of influence on, on these revenues. And just to kind of illustrate what we're talking about with the weather impacts. On this plot, you see they've got five years, four historical years plus twenty twenty-three of build water usage. So this is not on the Y-axis there on the left. We're looking at millions of gallons. This is not direct revenue, but you can correlate it to revenue. And we've seen some rate increases over this time, so representing it with revenue wouldn't give you as clear of a picture as just looking at the actual volume of water that was used. And you can see that that twenty twenty-three line is tracking kind of right on target with up until March, June rather, with twenty nineteen. And just for a little bit of cons, like uh, what a context, that was a hard word. Twenty nineteen, we had about thirty-five to thirty-six hundred accounts, utility accounts. Right now we've got closer to forty-one hundred. So there's about five hundred tap difference there. And we're still tracking pretty close until June. And even then you can see in July, we, we didn't come close to that as far as build usage. There's the part of me that is our raw water resources manager as well, that is very, very grateful for all of the rain. But there's, there's definitely an impact to our revenue stream from that. And we are not the only ones in my conversations with my peers around the community in Northern Colorado, on average, is seeing about most people I've talked to, twenty-five to thirty percent reduction in revenues from twenty-three over the same time in twenty-one. Uh, excuse me, twenty-two. So we are looking at a revenue shortfall this year projected from this point forward. This is, you know, a mostly clear crystal ball, looking at as much as a, as a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall from over This is, you know, a mostly clear crystal ball, looking at as much as a, as a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall from over projected. And it's virtually impossible to peel out the difference between. Weather impacts on, on an impact like this versus unrealized growth in a situation like this. Predominantly, this impact is going to be driven by the weather. So as I mentioned, we've got a lot of graphs coming at you, so just to set the stage a little bit, they're pretty consistent in presentation, we're going to look at. Projected revenues based on the projected growth, the same numbers that you saw in Mr. Bird's presentation, related to how many building permits we had anticipated pulling over a five-year span. Those are the same growth projections that were utilized within the rate study to develop our financial plan. And look at both rate revenue projections as well as impact fee projections. And then coinciding with kind of those percent differences or variance that Mr. Bird showed around. Actual building permits compared to projected, we're going to look at what, what kind of revenue reduction would we see? If we looked at a fifteen percent reduction in projected growth and a twenty-five percent reduction in projected growth. So these numbers are going to be growth-related only, there's not embedding any other of those multiple variables that we showed on the previous slide. This one is just looking at if there is strictly a reduction in the amount of homes that come online over the next few years and what that can impact to the utilities. So to start with, this is just our, our projected growth, or excuse me, our projected revenues starting, including last year, moving forward. With a fifteen percent growth projection reduction, we'd be looking at over the same six-year span, about a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall. That's not catastrophic, but it's not nothing, and I guess the point really is just that this is related to a singular variable. A variable that we do have a little bit of influence over, and if we definitely have the influence to, to. Make things more difficult, I suppose, or to limit the ability to grow for sure as well. Conversely, this is what it would look like with a twenty-five percent growth reduction, just in the projected water rate revenues. Now looking at impact fees, it's similar that you can see a difference in scale for sure, as we're looking at those one-time impact fees. You'll see that jump from twenty-three to twenty-four, that was kind, that's a planned increase where we're projecting to be. Quote-unquote open for business for permits after the plant capacities have increased and are ready to go. That's where that jump comes from. Now, if we, if we see a, a reduction in those growth estimates or growth projections of fifteen percent, you're looking at, you know, over a million, one point three million dollars in revenue shortfall over that time period. And much more significant with a twenty-five percent reduction, and this is a fixed reduction across the board, right? So that's not, this is our estimates to provide a guide and just a general kind of impact. I don't believe in reality, it would look just like this, it would be a, you know, fixed decrease in any given year. But just to provide some, some ideas of what that impact can look like. And the same thing in this packet is with wastewater, much less palatable colors, but sorry about that, you run out of options at some point. And so again, fifteen percent, you see a lesser reduction in rates with our wastewater charges, there's less variability as a whole. Is the majority of those, of those charges are fixed throughout the year, especially for our residential customers, based on that winter usage, right? So there's not nearly the amount of fluctuation. And that's saying, that's same with the twenty-five percent decrease, then you're not seeing, it's not as much impact. But again, with those impact fees, we do see a greater, greater impact on the overall, right? So similar in that one point three million dollar range, and again, similar in the just over two million dollar range. I would, this was a lot of information and we, we told you we were going to pause to take questions, but we just jumped right through. So I'll bring Cody and Bob back up, but before we kind of jump to the next slide in summary, do you have any specific data questions around any of the tables and graphs and all the numbers that we've shown?
Trusty Gator?
So this is, this looks at revenue, doesn't deal with expenses or anything else like that? Okay.
Correct.
Trusty Daly?
Great presentation, I have no questions, thank you.
Number ten?
Oh, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Megan?
Good.
Kristi?
Sure. On your graph on page sixteen, it says that the rate revenue variables are, it looks like about thirty-four million gallons being billed out. But then on the report that we actually received further in the packet, it said we had thirty-nine million gallons provided. We have a difference of nine million gallons there, is there a reason for that?
So the reports that you see, the utility production reports, those are going to be the, the numbers produced at the plant. This is the numbers that went through a meter at someone's house, so there is, there are, there's water loss generally, if you can keep it under ten percent between what's produced and. If you can keep it at or under ten percent of what's produced versus what's billed, you're doing an incredibly good job. And ours is likely a little bit higher than that, so that, that's predominantly the discrepancy between what's produced versus what is billed at the meter.
Got it, so that is probably an accurate nine million dollar difference?
Nine million gallons.
Not nine million dollars, yes, nine million gallons difference. Of water loss?
Yeah.
Got it, but that's something that we all pay for included in all of that, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
Got it, how do we fix a nine million gallon water loss?
And what year are you looking at?
This is for this year, twenty-twenty-three, it says that million gallons revenue. Is about thirty-four from the graph, and then if you look at the actual plant. For what we produced for the water, it was thirty-nine, so I'm looking at a nine million difference.
So it's five million, right, thirty-four to thirty-nine?
Oh, yes, got it, sorry about that.
That's, yeah, I mean, it's water, it's, it's water loss, so it's the ability to, I can have some of our distribution system people come up here and talk, but. There is, like I said, if, if we could even hit ten percent, which would be about three million gallons. We'd be doing stellar, so we do have room to get better. Oh, I guess that's true too, yeah, we bill in, in arrears, right? But it would still, no, this is July's. Let's not get away late on that, this is, the production and the build usage should, should align.
Okay, so then that was my question on it, is how do we go about preserving that? Cause that would assist in taking care of how many acre feet towards new building permits?
Yeah, there is, there is some.
That, that's my question is, is how do we preserve that, flip it around and turn it into a positive instead of a loss for?
I don't, I don't know that we're going to grow more water.
Well, no, but.
Get more in the system, but yeah, I get.
Positive for money coming in compared to we're paying for whatever's being lost is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, we do participate annually in, in the AWWA water loss audit. So we have, we go through the steps to determine how much water loss we have, don't forget, there's hydrant flushing, there's system flushing. There's, which happens weekly actually in some areas, right? In order to maintain our, our water quality requirements within our distribution system, so there's always going to be loss. We'll never, never be able to reach production equals build usage, but we could definitely get better by a couple million gallons.
Got it, there's one other question I had. On the page ten, when you're looking at the actual permits issued compared to. Projected permits that will be possibly coming to us just in the annexation, we're looking at further into this evening. That looks like one thousand three hundred and forty-six additional homes over projected the next six years. So is that going to be at the end of the day? When you look at it, my question is, is we have a contract for two thousand gallons of water from North Pretty Irrigation.
Two thousand acre.
Two thousand acre feet, and then we also have the three hundred and seventy-five acre feet from the wells, the three wells that produce. While we can take in or we're open for business, where do we say? Okay, we need to stop because we can only be guaranteed so many acre feet a year in our agreement. So when I'm looking at this and I see these tracking in the upwards, is this on trend to fall into where we fell into the gap? Like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when we were pretty mass producing? At the end of this, are we looking at another water wastewater plant? Addition by adding?
Oh.
There was multiple question, yeah, so what?
So are we at the end of this, when we are looking at this historic and projected residential building permits? We're looking at for a possible build out down Highway one, one thousand three hundred and forty-six homes over the next six years?
Can I, can I frame this a little bit, just in context? The, you're talking about a, a specific development proposal that is on your agenda later tonight?
Correct.
And these numbers were not generated based on any of that?
Nope, that's not what I'm asking.
Okay, I'm framing the context to help understand that you're talking about two different topics there. The, the numbers that were used for projected permits were based on an average year, how much the town would expect to normally see from our residential development community. Knowing that the cop plan had talked about this concept of purposeful growth, that we didn't want to see three hundred and forty-three year over year. That we wanted to see a number that was showing continued and moderate growth without breaking the bank on highs or lows. And we also recognize when we make projections like this into future years. We don't control the variables in the marketplace, like Ms. Smith said a moment ago. We may have years where there's an economic recession where we issue very few permits and we may have years where the economy is good and demand is high and we issue more than projected. The idea behind the projections is to use a number that we can consistently rely upon for revenue projections, knowing that some years may be high and some years may be low. So that's how we came up with the projected numbers, was just looking at typical average year based on the community's values for continuing some growth, but not growing too fast. What, what did that baseline look like?
So are these examples you put here, does that balance us? For the examples that are displayed, twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-eight, does that make it to where? This is what we would have to look at as far as staying balanced within what we see coming in for tap fees and whatnot?
Think the question is, is if we hit the projected permit numbers, does that keep our revenue stream in the water and wastewater?
Out of the deficit?
Yes, that gets us, I know we're deficit through twenty-five, I think, but then, are we back in the positive? If we hit the one eighty-three, one ninety, one ninety-six, two hundred, I think that's the question that you're asking.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. Um, there is still going to be the twenty-twenty-two projected, the twenty-twenty-three projected, not realized, but projected numbers were also utilized in those in the Raftellus rate study. So we are already ninety-nine minus eighty and a hundred and whatever minus eighty-two, we're already, or a hundred and twenty-one minus hundred and thirteen, ninety-nine minus eighty-two. We're already behind schedule, so there will be a catch-up period. Hopefully, and we're not talking about. Revenue fund balances this evening, so that's a different discussion in order to identify when or how we would get out of that. All I can say is that the, the projected permits were utilized to develop the financial planning effort that went in with the rate study in twenty-twenty-two. So far in the last two years, we haven't hit those targets. If we do continue on that path, the, the depth and length of deficit spending. I would guess would expand.
Got it, so and that's where that third question came in with adding those additional permits through already, well, pre-approved. We already have pending developments that are going in. Would that balance it back out with the newer approved permits compared to adding a bunch more additional permits on top of it?
So I went back to one of the other slides that has the, our residential lot inventory. So this, this table illustrates the, the already approved, or a lot of times you'll hear the term development pipeline. So when I say that, that's talking about the number of lots that are available for development at some phase or another. So what you see here is a, a list of, of all the residential subdivisions that have lots. Either annexed zone, platted or with infrastructure installed, those are each of the columns. So the further that you see yeses in the column, the closer you get to issuing permits. So Sage Meadows second, we mentioned a minute ago, has a hundred and three lots in that development, which is under construction for infrastructure. Once we add a yes to that final column, then the bottom line for buildable lots will increase by a hundred and three.
Got it.
And so same is true for each of those subdivisions, but the, the totals you see, six hundred and seven is the total number of platted lots within the town. And the, I'd have to double check, but Country Lane Acres is not platted, so that, that no in the platted column, that forty-one's not counting into that six hundred and seven. But those are all of the developments that are currently in the development pipeline where we could issue lots. So six hundred and seven is the total that you're looking at over any, any number of years for the total number of permits that could be issued.
Perfect, thank you.
You probably know this, with our current projection of what the new water treatment plant and the wastewater, how many actual lots? Can we provide for? Is it going to be ten thousand more lots or what? Do we have any idea how far until we have to worry about building more capacity?
So we have over four thousand water accounts right now, that's basically customers taps. And we're doubling our capacity, so we're with kind of water savings through conservation methods. And just the fact that new houses all have water conserving facilities in them, fixtures. We're looking at something in excess of eight thousand customers total, probably closer to eighty-five to eighty-six hundred. So a little bit more than doubling our ability to, to grow with these expansions, which we're paying for now.
So what we currently got even projected right now is not even coming close to using our capacity.
That's exactly it, yes, and they're not coming at the rate that we had anticipated either or hoped for.
Okay, back at it.
So we did try and summarize some of those, the concepts that we're trying to illustrate here. And one of them is that growth is vital to the town's financial health and in particular, the utilities' financial health. The other is that we've already committed to this growth through the process of approving the plan expansions. Approving the loans, the ninety million dollars in loans that we took out, that's a little less than that. For the plan expansions, the debt service for those loans, which we're obligated to, to take care of now. And we've just kind of already discussed the three primary sources of revenue and two of those are heavily influenced by the growth, the actual growth that we see. So if projections aren't realized, I think probably everybody's come to this conclusion already, but if they're not realized. We have to reevaluate our budgets, our expenses, our impact fees, our rates, unfortunately. And again, current customers, the only actual revenue source that we have right now. All the growth-related revenue is all, you know, on the come here, it, it, we're hoping that it comes, it needs to come. We've committed to serving future customers, but we also have to enable that to happen, right? And that's, that's one of the points that we're trying to illustrate with this. A lot of those factors are outside of our control, we can't control the weather, we can't really control customer habits. There's so many things that we can't control, the only thing that we can come close to controlling. Is enabling the, the potential for purposeful growth, which we have also committed to the concept of purposeful growth. And we've been following that concept for the last five years that I've been here anyway.
Can I interject real quick? I got a question.
And maintaining that, that development pipeline is crucial to that central point, that without growth. Our financial health is in trouble, there's no other way to say that, especially for the utilities, that impacts the whole town. And really, we're presenting this relative to the utilities, but it's kind of a microcosm for all the different funds at the town, so.
Mr. Young? So basically would be fair to say that if. We don't allow for more growth, the cost to our residents is going to go up in water fees and cost. And town's income is still going to go down in a deficit, there's really no way to equalize that and it would make cost of living almost impossible.
That is fair to say.
Thank you.
Yes, it is, and.
I have a quick question then, so just out of curiosity, from an economic development standpoint. How much of an impact would a high-water user like Another Hotel impact those projections?
Well, you know, if you'd asked me that two years ago, I would have said, oh my gosh, we're not going to have capacity, but we will soon have the capacity. So in essence, that's additional revenue, ratepayer revenue, right? So that will help. So that will help offset some of the issues. So high-water users, um, as long as they're using that water wisely and all those things are not necessarily a bad thing right now. Because those folks aren't going to get online before our plants are finished and operating. Uh, it takes a while to get through the development process, so we need to be thinking about this now, in my opinion.
Well, I was trying to help you with a little bit of sunshine there.
I know, that's, that would be great news.
Um, I mean, because we've done a ton of work on our, our comprehensive plan, putting together some very intentional zoning uh, mechanisms for growth and development. We're investing in staff to help with economic development opportunities, and we have a very vibrant, uh, Main Street and Chamber group. So I think that, you know, these conversations are appropriate, you know, the, thank you for sharing the bad news. But I also think that at the same time, like, we were preparing for this moment. Like, we, we knew that this day would come and that we would be able to open, open the doors again for growth and development. I think that the challenge that we had is that, as Mr. Bird indicated, that for so long, we had to have difficult conversations with developers about pumping the brakes for a little bit and being very intentional about the building permits that were being released. So, you know, it took us two years to pump the brakes to slow that growth down. I think it would be reasonable to say it'll probably take us, you know, two years to get it recharged again and back on track. Um, so I guess my, my question is, and, uh, Ms. Smith mentioned that, you know, fund balances weren't necessarily something that was going to be discussed this evening, but how, how is the Water Enterprise Fund backfilled when there's a loss of revenue? Do we backfill that from the, the general fund or, or reserve account?
You may recall that last year, there was, um, the board asked us to backfill some from the general fund to the water fund to, uh, help with the rate increases. There's only so much money there to backfill with, right? And I think that we're, I'm not going to say we've tapped it out, but we certainly tapped into it pretty aggressively over the last few years. So the enterprise funds are intended to, to survive on their own, to be, um, a net zero business-like enterprise in some ways, nonprofit. But, uh, still, we would hope that the enterprise funds, the water sewer funds in particular would survive on their own merits moving forward.
That answer your question?
No, it didn't. That's okay. I bet the answer will come in later days.
Perfect. Um, yeah, just continue.
I think that's pretty much the conclusion.
Okay, perfect. Thank you guys very much. All right, next we'll have the, uh, consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the titles of the items on the agenda? Consent agenda, please.
Item C one, resolution number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado to approve amending the Laramore Emergency Telephone Authority Intergovernmental Agreement. Item C two, the August eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
May I get a motion, please?
So that's a super quick question, um, I know Mr. Garcia just gave me a thumbs up. Um, Lita had accidentally put the mayor of Wellington, New Zealand in the agreement, and they were able to get that fixed, so our mayor's in there? Awesome.
Good catch.
There are a lot of things to review in all of these, and reviewing down the way down to the signature block, so.
That's okay.
That one slipped past me.
We'll get some shrimp to throw him on the barbie. All right, yeah, may I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wigan?
Yes.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Daley?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes, the consent agenda is approved.
All right, now we will proceed to the action items. Uh, will the clerk please read the title of the first item?
Item D one, resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution of, of the town of Wellington, Colorado, considering contracts for treated water storage tanks, coatings and improvements.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see y'all again. Dave Meyer, engineering staff. For, I, I don't have a presentation prepared for tonight, um, so I'm just going to do a quick flyby on the, um, the entire package, um, pretty comprehensive package I prepared for you. So for your approval, um, tonight is a contract with Hansel Phelps Construction Company, um, for improvements to the towns to treated water storage tanks of the water treatment plant. Uh, so where this all started, uh, a few years ago, twenty twenty-one, we had both of those tanks inspected uh, by Medical Diving Services, and they recommended sandblasting, recoding and repairs to corroded areas of both of those tanks. Um, and also some minor repairs, um, to some of the exterior facilities of the tanks. So as, as you all were, um, construction is currently taking place, uh, at the plant, um, for the expansion project with Hansel Phelps onboard as a general contractor. Wayfield Group are the subcontractors that are onboard for the electrical services. So the approved twenty twenty-three budget includes one point three million dollars for improvements to the big tank, the two million gallon, gallon tank. And it also includes one point three million for improvements at a smaller tank in twenty twenty-five. However, contractor costs came in substantially lower than originally anticipated. So therefore, instead of spreading the work over all of these years, staff engineers here are proposing to undertake all of this work on both tanks under a single contract, with all this work completed by June, June thirtieth. That would involve a slight increase to the twenty twenty-three CIP budget. However, important to note, it would eliminate the one point three million dollars that is planned for twenty twenty-five for the smaller tank, that will go away. In addition, we are also proposing the addition of, um, tank mixing systems, uh, to both of those tanks to help with water, water quality. So scope of work includes, um, following contractors, Hansel Phelps is the general contractor, Coplaca Services, they're, they're, they're the painters, they're the ones that will be putting in all of the coatings and the preparation work. Advanced Tank, they're out of Wellington, they built and installed the original tanks. Um, Wayfield Group, as I mentioned, um, they'll be subcontract, contracting with Hansel Phelps for all the electrical work for the installation of the mixing systems. And finally, the town of Wellington engineering staff, uh, will be purchasing the mixing systems and hire an independent third-party inspector to do the inspections on the coatings. Project schedule, um, has a starting with the big tank, um, sometime in, in, in mid-October, drain that tank. Some simultaneous work might occur on the other tank as well, if weather permits. Um, with both tanks being disinfected online, um, before the substantial completion date of, uh, April fifteenth, everything done exterior of both tanks by June first. The town did hire, um, for some engineering report, a firm out of Four Collins called Ditesco, um, a few weeks ago, a few months ago. Their scope includes, um, some initial inspections that they already did, um, some assistance with the state, um, disinfection contact time calculations, mixing system evaluations and preparation of some specifications. Uh, they'll also be attending meetings and doing some observations during construction. Uh, Ditesco did produce a tech memo in July, um, that evaluated several different mixing systems. The town ultimately, ultimately selected the Gridby, uh, mixers. Um, there's a, there's a picture of those mixers in your board package and also the technical memorandum that Ditesco provided. Project fees, so tonight before you is just a contract with Hansel Phelps. Um, that's the board request, one point three million dollars roughly. As far, in terms of the entire project, I bullied those in your, in your package, we had the Tesco's services for about thirty. The mixing systems are, we already costed those out at about twenty-seven thousand. Inspectors, uh, testing fees, I'm estimating that to be about thirty thousand, they'll probably come in less than that for a total project cost of about one point four million, which puts us about a hundred thousand dollars over the one point three that was budgeted for twenty twenty-three. So engineering staff proposed utilizing, um, some, some project savings from some twenty twenty-three budgeted CIP efforts, including the tank aeration study, pre, pre-treatment building, um, pre-treatment facility improvements. And there's one more, I believe, yeah, fencing at the pre-treatment building as well. So as far as, um, hiring Hansel Phelps, I did produce a justification for soul sourcing that to, to, uh, Hansel Phelps. Uh, instead of going out, uh, for bids on that, its opinion of Wellington staff engineers that it was highly unlikely the other general contractors would be even interested in undertaking this recording project, knowing that we have an expansion going on and that we have HP fully on, uh, onsite, uh, as well as Wayfield. There are several attachments that I included for your package, including some pictures. Um, so we're just asking for approval of the Hansel Phelps contract. And all of us are here, we'll try to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Start with, uh, yeah, Trusty Gator.
All right, um, first off, kudos to you guys being able to, well, I mean, I know it all worked together, but being able to do both tanks for a hundred thousand dollars more than we had budgeted. That's fantastic news. Um, and I greatly appreciate you guys pulling together. How do we fund that? Because that's always the question I have, how do we pay for that? Uh, thank you Patty for clarifying my questions that I had yesterday. Um, so just a clarification on the aeration tape study. It sounds like that's basically kind of going to be incorporated almost into what they're already doing on the tanks, so that would kind of fall under part of it, so it wouldn't need it elsewhere, so we can easily transfer that over.
Uh, a- absolutely. A lot of the questions that we would have had with the aeration study have already been answered by the, the work that Ditesco did.
Perfect. Um, and then with the pre-treatment, it sounds like you guys were able to do a lot of that with current things. Is that going to cause problems in other line item of expenses for public works for water? Or we feel pretty good about, we're not going to end up, I just want to make sure that by you guys doing the work, it's great that we're able to do it ourselves. I just want to make sure we don't end up running over budget somewhere else.
Uh, the concrete portion, we, we're going to do that with materials on hand. Basically, we're going to use recycled concrete instead of new concrete.
Okay.
And the fence, uh, it's important to note, it's just getting deferred.
It's just getting deferred to future.
The first two are getting deleted.
Deleted, okay, perfect. But we feel good, it's not going to mess with any other areas of you guys' budget by taking those.
Correct.
Okay, good. So overall, I think, uh, thank you for getting my questions answered, Patty, I'm comfortable with this. I think you guys, it's great if we can put that one point three million dollars towards something else in future, I think it's very helpful, so good job.
Huge future savings I'm seeing, so that, that's amazing, so thank you for the presentation.
No questions, I, yeah, I, same thing, these guys have said, I mean, saving one point three out of the CIP for twenty twenty-five is a great deal, so appreciate it, Dave.
I honestly have to shadow pretty much whatever everyone else said, um, there's no complaints here. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate the efficiency.
Yeah, great presentation, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, any comments from the public on this agenda item? Go once, go in twice, sold. Any final comments, direction from the board? Well, Mr. Clerk, may you please do a roll call?
I believe we need to give you the motion.
Oh.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, approving the execution of the contract with Hansel Phelps Construction Company.
Second. Now, Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mayor Shosse, Trusty Daley?
Yes.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes and resolution number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three is adopted.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read, um, title items D two through D two or D four?
Certainly, Mayor Shosse. Item D two, public hearing and resolution number thirty dash twenty twenty-three, Sage Farms Annexation and the Village at Sage Farms Annexation Plan. Unit Development Zoning, Invested Development Rights for a Site-Specific Development Plan. Item D three, consideration of annexation agreements, invested development rights for the Sage Farms Annexation and the Village at Sage Farms Annexation. Item D four, ordinance number zero nine dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the town of Wellington, Colorado, conditionally annexing the Sage Farms Annexation and the Village at Sage Farms Annexation and establishing zoning as planned unit development PUD.
Perfect, thank you. Um, since items D two through D four seem to be related, Mr. Bird, will you please, um, explain the relationship between the presented items to the board?
I will, thank you, Mayor. Um, while I'm explaining that, if, maybe I could be promoted to panelist in case I have materials to share with the, with the screen. Um, so these three items are integrally related and we wrestled a little bit with exactly the best way to present the volume of information for these three items. It was close to a hundred pages of information and that's probably not even enough to, to really fully uh, dive into every single detail that the board might be interested in. Um, so we've broken this into three parts kind of based on, on function. Um, and the way we've presented these are maybe not in the way that we would present a, a typical, simple annexation, but this is a, a pretty, um, uh, broad, uh, development proposal for approximately three hundred acres. Um, and it's proposed as a master-planned community, um, with a variety of housing product types, housing densities and commercial components, uh, all included in the same overall big picture. So when we put this, this, uh, agenda packet together, um, there's a couple of things that the board has to accomplish. The, the, the one thing that you have to accomplish tonight is you have to open a public hearing for consideration of the annexation, because that's what this item was primarily, primarily associated with, and that's what you've advertised. The date and time for tonight's meeting was for that public hearing. There are other associated items, um, oh, let me take a step back. The public hearing item, when we're considering, when a municipality considers an annexation proposal, there's a couple of things we have to accomplish, and one of them is zoning. Uh, when we annex a property means we're taking it from unincorporated Laramore County and bringing it into the town limits. When we bring it into the town, we subject that property to, um, town rules and regulations, including our zoning ordinance. So state law says that when you annex a property, you have to assign zoning within ninety days of the effective date of the annexation ordinance. The timing of that can, we can, if the board isn't ready to adopt an ordinance tonight and it gets adopted a later date, zoning still has ninety days from the effective date of the ordinance. But in this case, the applicant, um, or the, the owner, the petitioner, um, is also requesting consideration for zoning as a planned unit development. This board hasn't done a planned unit development, or a couple of you may have been in, on the board when we did one other planned unit development, but it's a little, little bit of a broader process than some of the simpler development proposals that this board has seen in the past. Um, but it is, in the, in a sense, it's just, it's the zoning that you would establish through the annexation piece of that. And the third component that we have a public hearing on, you can accomplish all these simultaneously with the same public hearing is the owner is requesting, uh, consideration for vesting of development rights. Um, and I'll dive into that a little bit more in detail later on, but in a, in a nutshell, vesting of development rights is a statutory procedure in town code or town, town land use code also allows vesting. It establishes a timeframe for which a site-specific development plan is allowed to continue. Um, in this instance, the applicant or the owner is requesting vested development rights in phases based on the project, which I'm going to dive into here next. Um, as we presented, um, in July, when the board first heard this for consideration of a resolution, starting the proceedings, um, this was presented as a serial annexation. A serial annexation is consideration of two annex, two or more annexation parcels in one proceeding, which is allowed under state statutes, and that's how we proceeded. Your maps in your packet reference the Sage Farms Annexation and the Village at Sage Farms Annexation. Those two properties are contiguous to the town boundaries, they meet all the requirements, um, for the constitution, the town uh, land use code and annexation proceedings, and they are being considered concurrently as one overall development request. As part of that overall development request, we're also looking at the zoning, which is proposed as a planned unit development overlay district and the vesting of development rights, all of which can be considered as one development proposal. Thus, the struggle staff had with presenting this much information into one packet, we split it into the component parts being a public hearing. At the end of the public hearing, um, whether that's tonight or continued to a later date, the board's action on the, for annexation proceedings on a public hearing is to adopt a resolution finding that the statutory requirements, the town requirements and the, um, constitutional requirements for annexation proceedings have been satisfied. Um, staff drafted a resolution, it's in your packet if you're ready to do that tonight. Um, and that, we've verified that all those findings have been satisfied, the board still has to take an action memorializing that via resolution. Um, then we presented the second, or D three in your packet, is the annexation agreements. Again, those are kind of, they're documents that spell out, these are the terms and conditions under which the property that's being annexed is proposed to proceed. Um, that, the annexation agreements are presented in two parts. The two parts are, in a sense, they're associated with the annexation parcels, Sage Farms, Village at Sage Farms. And they're presented as two different agreements because of the different context. The Sage Farms Annexation parcel is the larger of the two, it's on the north end. It's closer to public infrastructure and facilities to meet a more immediate, um, development. And the Village at Sage Farms is primarily the, the larger commercial aspect identified in the comprehensive plan as an activity center and a commercial node, um, near the intersection of County Road fifty-eight and Highway one. Um, the, the reason for separating those two is because the timeline for development of, um, that large scale of a commercial project is not a, as consistent and reliable as a residential development that has a very. Is not a, as consistent and reliable as a residential development that has a very, pretty straightforward process for review and approval. And the marketplace demand that's predictable. Um, that commercial aspect is expected to take a few years longer than the other piece. And so there's some different considerations for, um, for how the, the timing, complexity, scope and cost of those different projects outlined in the annexation agreements. And last item D four, I think that's right, D four is the, uh, an ordinance. Probably the simplest piece of the process is adoption of an ordinance, which this board does all the time. Um, but that adoption of that ordinance is really the, the piece where the board would say, if you're ready. That we approve of this annexation, we approve of this zoning. And therefore we can approve the annexation agreements, the vesting of development rights, all of those factors. And bundle it all together so that essentially this was presented as a. Quote unquote, all or nothing deal. If one piece isn't approved, all the other pieces are related to it. And so they need to kind of stay together. Um, if there, if one item is continued to a later date, most likely all of those items are going to be continued to a later date to keep this development proposal. Kind of packaged together for consideration all at once. That was a, a long-winded explanation of why they're interrelated, but also got a little bit into the background on that I'm going to dive into here in a minute too.
Perfect. Thank you for the explanation. All right. Um, now I'm going to open this up for a public hearing for the Sage Farms Annexation, Village at Sage Farm Annexation. The planned unit development zoning and invested development rights for the site specific, uh, development plan and the time being seven forty one P M. Members of public wishing to speak on this item, please sign on the sheet of the study, uh, podium, state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes to provide comments and please keep your comments applicable to this item.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question regarding the public hearing piece.
Yeah.
Staff, can you please clarify when and how often the public hearing was published or posted? All of the different places and how many times?
I, I can't, I know I, I believe I put this in the packet.
It is.
It is.
It is in the packet.
Also, um.
It is.
You want me to do it?
No, I want.
And, okay.
In accordance with, with state law, the notice requirements for annexation proceedings are quite onerous. Um, the. Starting with the resolution of the board in a public meeting, that resolution gets published four times in a newspaper of general circulation in the area. We've. The Fort Collins, Colorado, is the town's official, uh, newspaper for publication. So that was advertised. Uh, six pages, um, in the Colorado and four times on, in consecutive weeks leading up to. Tonight's hearing, the first of which was no less than thirty days prior to tonight's hearing. Um, we also sent, um, the statutorily required notices to all of the Title thirty two special districts. Um, Title thirty two special districts include the school, water district providers, fire districts. Uh, library districts. I won't name the whole list. They are in your annexation impact report. Um, but the, those notices are sent, um, twenty-five days in advance, uh, for those entities to review and consider. Uh, we also send correspondence to the Board of County Commissioners under statutory requirements. We send them the annexation impact report as well as a notice. Informing them that the resolution to initiate proceedings has been adopted. And the, um, that's two notices go to the Board of County Commissioners, one that we've initiated proceedings and one is the annexation impact report. Um, we've required three signs. We posted on the property at various locations along GW Bush Avenue. Um, and the intersection at GW Bush Highway one and County Road fifty eight, we purposely chose not to put a sign along the state highway because we didn't want to encourage people to stop on a highway. It shows the, the local roads as an alternative. Um, but three signs were posted and have been continuously posted since the date of the, or resolution, resolution adoption. And we sent notices to, um, all the property owners within five hundred feet of the properties, of the annexation property. Um, that was a hundred and eighty-three notices sent to surrounding property owners. Think I captured everything.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, before we dove in, would you mind if I gave a quick, um, rundown on public hearing procedures just for the audience?
Yes, please.
Members here, may I speak? I know this board gets tired of this spiel, uh, but I'll, they'll do it again. Um, we'll start the, the public hearing procedures with disclosure of any conflicts of interest that board members may have. We also do a report of any ex parte communications, ex parte communications being communications that happened outside of a public meeting process. Where you may have gained information that's beneficial to other members of the board in making their considerations. We'll do that first and then we'll go into, uh, a staff introduction, um, of the background of the project. I know I dove into it a little bit, but I've got a little bit more that I can share for some context in this particular proposal. Um, following the staff introduction, we'll give the applicants an opportunity to. Provide, uh, additional information that they may wish to share regarding their development proposal and requests. Um, following presentations, um, if the board has any clarifying questions, we're happy to answer those. Otherwise, then we'll turn it over to the public for public comments. Um, the public comment period, um, once everyone wishing to speak has had a chance to, to do that. Um, then the applicant will have a, an opportunity to respond to any comments or questions that they heard from the public hearing. And then town staff will also have an opportunity to, uh, make any closing remarks based on information presented in the testimony. Um, following the rebuttals and closing remarks, um, then it'll go back over to the Board of Trustees for your deliberations. Are there any, and I guess we've included motion options in your staff reports. I'd, I'd lean on those pretty heavily. If you need any assistance with your, your op, options for. Um, approval, approval of any of the items or continuing any of the items, if you, if it's not clear and you need assistance. Uh, ask for sta, town staff to assist. Myself and Mr. Sapiens are more than happy to help you craft the appropriate motions for those. Any questions regarding the public hearing procedures?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to dive into an introduction?
Well, I'm sorry, I have, I do have ex parte communication that I do need to disclose. Um, I was aware, when I was running for trustee, I was aware that this development was coming. Um, it was more of a discussion at the time. It was a discussion that Jim Sykes was keeping his location that I see is identified on the map. And that his father senior, um, Syke senior was also keeping the property down towards the end of the curve. Where you come around fifty-eight and go to Highway one. So I was made aware, I don't know if I have to identify if it was before I was trustee, but. It's out there. So that way there's no confusion that I was aware that this development was coming as a proposal.
Perfect. Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you, Trusty Teets. I'd already started to get ahead of myself. So, no, no, it's perfect. I appreciate you doing that. Um, so by way of introduction. As you probably say, well, Cody, haven't you introduced enough? Um, I'm going to initiate a, a screen share here. To help frame the, the context for which we're discussing this item. A little lag, but it, there it is. So. I'm starting with, with, um, this is one of the documents that was in your, uh, packet. Um, it's been widespread in our notices and publications. To kind of identify the, the, uh, the proposal. I'm going to zoom in on it here. I know we lose the texture on the edges, but this is just kind of helps frame, um, the location extent and context. Um, this is a, a page, uh, from the zoning, um, map for Sage Farms P U D proposed. And the property here is, um, south of GW Bush Avenue, uh, all the way to County Road fifty eight. And from Highway one to the BNSF railroad crossing. Um, the property is approximately three hundred acres in size. That does include some of the right of way for public dedications for Highway Railroad. Um, County Road fifty eight and GW Bush Avenue. Um, so there, there's a, the total developable ended a little bit less than the three hundred acres, but for the purposes of this. Consideration, three hundred acres is a good number to rely upon. Um, as I mentioned, it's a proposed as a serial annexation. The, the area in primarily at the south end near County Road fifty eight is the. Uh, it's the reddish color is the Sage, the Village at Sage Farms Annexation is proposed. Um, as the second part of this, uh, annexation agreement series. Um, we can consider all of this together, as I mentioned before. Uh, but this, this zoning map generally identifies the areas for which the developer and owner is seeking approvals for. The yellow areas, the, the area kind of in the middle is identified as area that would be single family detached. Uh, development with various lot sizes, um, some a little bit higher density, some a little bit lower density. And the. Areas along the north side, along GW Bush Avenue and Highway one are proposed for, this calls out multifamily. The details are defined a little bit further in the P U D document text. Um, but really what's, what's proposed here, um, is a. The developer, I'll actually let the developer speak more to this because I don't have all the details of their, um, conversations with the, with the potential client. But the intent here is to look at single family attached at a higher density that would be supported by the proposed zoning. We have some examples of that product type to share with you tonight. Um, and then at the corner of GW Bush Avenue and Highway one is a nine and a half acre. Um, proposed for commercial development that, um, both the commercial along fifty eight and at the intersection at GW Bush and Highway one are identified in the comprehensive plan as. Um, retail and, and commercial, uh, desires of the community. Um, so this, this planning development zoning map was. Following the guidance of the comprehensive plan to satisfy the desires of the town that were identified in that policy document. The, some other context here, the, um, the light blue area, I think it's light blue along Highway one there. Um, our area is identified for larger lot, estate lot type development. If you look at a little bit broader context on the other side of Highway one, there's a development in the county called Cottonwood Shores. And those are larger estate type lots. And so there was a, a cognizant effort and desire to. Mirror a little bit of what is on the other side of that road here so that we don't have high density. You know, apartments or, or close clustered, single family right across the street from something that's a totally different product type. So there was a desire to kind of. Um, keep compatible land uses nearby. And, um, as Trusty Teets had pointed out, there is an area here, that's the, um, the R, R, R one C, um. Yeah. Single family C. Excuse me. Get the terminology consistent there. Um, it's an area that is, has historically been used as the agricultural operations by the, the farmers of that land. There's a silo, there's some outbuildings, um, and some others related to structures. They desire to continue to use those ag operations as existing today until such time as it's no longer needed or until the property develops for other purposes. Um, we purposely asked the developer to contemplate, um, how they're going to protect that, that desire of the farmers to, to continue to use that. But also as the town continues to grow and this project develops out. How can they make sure that that property is also going to be integrally, integrally tied and developed into the urban fabric of the community? So it doesn't just leave a pocket of what do you do with that? Um, that was a big concern of our planning staff to make sure that we don't leave holes in the community, just because we didn't think about them at the time. Um, some other nuance here, um, the area in green, um, green, you might likely associate with park and open space, and that is the intent here. It's not the only open space. There would be other pocket parks identified throughout the subdivision, um, or subdivisions as this develops. Um, but the idea here was to, uh, it was following guidance from the comprehensive plan effort and the, uh, guidance from the. Uh, at the time it was the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, now it's post. Um, but the, the idea was to consolidate some of our town park and open spaces into larger, more regional and meaningful parks instead of. Uh, dividing all of our resources across smaller parks that are higher burden for staff to maintain. And to make them more meaningful where they can accommodate the different type of, uh, regional park or community park instead of just pocket parks throughout town. The development still has to provide pocket parks as one of their other requirement obligations. Um, so the, in addition to the zoning map, this is the conceptual plan unit development plan. Um. It just, it's a little bit further detail, shows you a little bit more, um, same zoning as proposed, but shows the street alignments. The areas that would be kind of a conceptual layout for those first couple of phases for multifamily. Um, those are concepts, they're not approval, but you're not seeking to get those approved tonight as part of this process that would require. A different review process, but the intent here was to be transparent. And illustrate, these are the types of developments that are currently being considered and proposed by the owner. So that we're not, no one wants to come back to this board and say, we told you we're going to do one thing and now we think we're going to do something different. Um, the value of this planned unit development and the, the process by which we're undertaking this. Is it spells out an entire master plan for this three hundred acres instead of just saying, oh, just, we'll worry about that other piece later. Um, this is a unified development plan. Drainage is a big piece of this equation. Um, the park and open space requirements, um, or the area identified for park and open space would accomplish. All of the regional drainage for this entire development in one location so that the, um, drainage is being satisfied on the front end. There's still site drainage and subdivision drainage has to be coordinated to make sure that it all works, but the master plan identifies that all of that area. Um, would be to one regional facility, um, to make, to maximize the, um, productive value of the different. Product types being proposed for residential and commercial uses. Um, the planned unit development is also a tool that, um, associated with the vesting that the owners requesting for vested development rights. Um, provides some protections for, um, both the owner and developer as well as the town. By looking at this project comprehensively, um, as a master plan community. The developer can ins- ensure some, um, clear expectations for what they would be able to market, develop and expect to. Uh, be able to accomplish within the town, um, over a longer period of time instead of being subject to, um, changes in town, um, zoning code. Um, comprehensive plan goals, other things that kind of locks in. This was the expectation at the time. And the developers proceeding in good faith to accomplish the goals that were identified for them. There are also protections for the town in a vested development rights scenario. Because when we, if the town approves an overall master plan like this with the P U D zoning overlay. It also secures that the town knows the developer is going to go out and attract these types of development. Because if the developer needs to or wants to try something different, different product type, different. Commercial zoning, different areas of that, they have to come back and receive approval from the town to change this development plan. So those protections kind of work both ways in terms of, um, meeting the developer's goals and, and desires as well as meeting the town's desires for securing. This, um, large development area in a primary growth corridor of our, of our community. There's a lot of other details that we could dive into. I'm happy to answer questions. I'm sure the owner is happy to answer questions as well. Um, and so we'll kind of, I'll defer those, you know, more detailed questions to, to later on here. Um, but I wanted to kind of frame the context for, um, how this was being presented, what was being presented and try and do it in a transparent way that. Anyone following along with an interest could clearly understand what it is that the board is, um, being presented with tonight and what those expectations are. Um, moving forward, um, the development proposal and, and outlined in the annexation agreements contemplates that. This three hundred acre proposed development is not going to happen in a year or two years or even ten years. That's why the developer is asking for those ex, longer vesting, uh, considerations. But it is proposed as a phased development, meaning that each phase of the process, the developer is going to come back and seek. We're ready for pursuing a subdivision plat for phase one. Phase one, it consists of this land area with these. Um, approved zoning types if the P U D is approved. Um, they would have to do that for each phase of development and would require town consideration of a preliminary plat, final subdivision plat. Development agreements, any cost sharing for town oversizing requirements, if we need larger pipe sizes than the development requires for their use. Um, transportation, um, improvements. All of those details get worked out in later phases that have to go through town processes, including staff review, planning commission review and board of trustees approval. So we know there's still a lot of work left to do on this, but this, the context in which it's being presented is the ask, do you want to annex this property into the town? And how do you want to zone it if you do annex it? If you do zone it in accordance with the P U D. We're expected to be a phased development plan over many years and the developer is going to come back with subsequent approval requests as outlined in the annexation agreement. At the risk of being repetitive, I'm going to stop and I'm turning it over to the, the developer and owner for them to present any additional information.
Thank you.
I can have to navigate some additional questions at the end of reference to that.
Hi, my name is Darren Roberson, um, and then Tom Dugan and Mark Gaffro. We all worked together on this project. Guys, these don't happen overnight. Uh, we started this project in two thousand seventeen, um, with the first hundred and fifty acres. Uh, we soon realized, you know, every subdivision in Wellington is a hundred and fifty acres and a big block and they go to the next. So in two thousand and nineteen, we actually contracted the next hundred and fifty acres, the Sykes property, all the way to fifty eight. Trying to do a great community and, and knowing that, um, again, this isn't going to take, it's going to be over multiple years. So we don't expect you guys to grasp it right away. We've been working on it for five or six years now. Um, we almost did not close on this type's property just because. The unknown, but it makes more sense. the unknown, but it makes more sense just with the drainage and the sewer plant and where we can get sewer to and the be able to bring commercial in and just give this community a great subdivision with diversity. Be able to give it affordable housing, high end housing, commercial. I will say this, I meant to have a letter of intent, but I've introduced Patty and Cody to Kevin Unger with UC Health. I think we had lunch in October of two thousand twenty two. On getting a letter of intent from UC Health because they really are pushing to bring a a hub here to County Road fifty eight, which would be huge for the community. Give it even more diversity. So I I have to say with town staff and Cody, Cody's been incredible working with this project to to bring a site that you guys have not seen before. It's in other neighborhoods, other communities, but not here. And again, this is not a five year project. This is not a ten year project. It's going to probably take us eight or ten years just to get to the Sykes property. And I think hopefully we'll be begging if we get, you know, a UC Health on board. How quickly can we get to County Road fifty eight? But there's still limits on getting there, so. Any other, and and guys, we really just want this zoning and be able to know that we kind of control. We have so much invested in this. Yeah. So in the first phase, guys, we've already kind of contracted or working a contract with D R Horton. And Cody, if you can pull that up, we're hoping not to bring apartments, but kind of to bring a paired housing product along with single family at the same time along the acreage along GW Bush. And this is kind of a product that they would like to do i- if allowed in the community here to give diversity and and some opportunities for affordable housing. So and I think that's, is that in their packet? But can you share it with them later or something?
Yeah. So this is one product line that we can do to where we're not just going to throw up a bunch of apartments, but we need that zoning. In fact, again, this would go along with some single family on the first phase also. And along with, we actually have already met with Hammer Smick Construction, Hammer's Construction on the nine acres there on GW Bush and and Highway one. To try to bring in some commercial there right away too that we think will go. So we fairly, we fairly think the beginning will go fast, but fast is hopefully moving dirt in two years. It doesn't happen quickly if we just stick with what we have right now, guys. And to bring up Sage Meadows, if Sage Homes builds out the next hundred and three lots in Sage Meadows and nothing else goes, we're going to be there for three years because we do about thirty five a year. So we need to get some other things in the pipeline. So, but this is the commercial that we're kind of looking at as an illustration to possibly be able to do on the nine acres there at Highway one and and GW Bush. So. You know, hopefully, hey, guys, we 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 don't plan on leaving the community. I mean, I grew up my whole life here. Built a lot of homes for a lot of people and then it's if we can continue to do it and have fun, we want to do it. And again, I I can't rave enough of town staff, Cody, Patty, Bob and them on just working with this and and helping this. I mean, we don't always agree on it, but it's taken five years to get here. And I think it's a well-planned community, so.
Start with questions from the board.
Would this be more general questions or just high level? Because I know typically-
This is, let's keep this high level and then we'll have public comment.
Perfect. Yeah, I'll save my questions till later.
Okay. Good.
I I did just have a single question for you guys. As far as irrigation goes and non-potable water, it it did seem to be kind of questionable from the packet as to whether there would be enough well water to be able to serve all these properties. I just want to see if I could get some clarification.
Confident it has similar wells to what Sage Meadows has also. We can't do all the fully testing until the crops are off. And because right now we're restricting the piping going in the ditches or a center pivot. But coffin wells, adjudicated wells, so of over roughly over four hundred acre feet that we're allotted for. So we feel confident we can deliver nonpot to all the residential and the commercial open space.
Trust me, you got anything?
On the commercial part there, on the nine acres, what kind of a commercial exposure are you going to have? I didn't see that up there. Or what are you looking at so far?
Just the concept of nine different tracks that we could maybe bring in a coffee house, maybe a convenience store and gas station on the corner. Want to try to buffer it to where it still has good curb appeal along Highway one and GW Bush. Again, that would have to be approved at a later date. And this is just a concept plan that you can kind of see that we put together.
Yeah, I like the paired housing concept too. I've seen a lot of them over there in the Timnath area.
Absolutely. And they were building some over there.
Right, right. And that would be a little bit more conducive for the Sage Meadows too, I would think, and a bunch of-
And and guys, our plan is to actually not front those against GW Bush, but just have a good curb appeal with them backing up to GW Bush. You don't see a bunch of doors and driveways. Again, that would all have to be approved at a later time.
Trustee Toots, anything high level?
I have a lot of questions, but I will keep them super simple for right now. So I I have two questions for you. And reading through, and I actually appreciated the document, the fiscal impact analysis that you guys submitted. It was extremely useful and I'm very grateful for it. In this packet, it's on page two seventy eight, it states for the first six years of development that this will create a fiscal deficit of reoccurring revenue for the town, which means that will we spend six years in a deficit in revenue?
So as part of the annexation supplemental, we had a company out of Denver prepare a fiscal analysis for the site. And what they put together was based on impact fees, revenues from taxes, sales tax revenues. So it was pretty comprehensive, but yes, in the first six years of of the construction portion of it, there probably will be a deficit, but it gets picked up pretty quickly after that.
So I and I guess that's kind of where a question I would have to direct back towards the town is if we have the funding to handle a six-year deficit to bring it. If that funding comes from a CIP or exactly what happens with that? The other question involves the parks that you guys identified that you have a large portion of the open space area is going towards the County Road fifty eight down towards the lower section. When looking at that and reading through our land use code, I had read that the open space does not actually classify or credit towards parks space. So you can't swap one for the other. So there still has to be so many parks and it was twenty percent on the resident population or a park with the every two hundred residents, there was a park and they had to be a fourth of a mile walking distance is what they're thinking about. I assume walkability, walk down to the end of the street and you have a park there. Do you guys plan on doing the six parks for the population area? Do you have a general knowledge of any of that?
So Cody, if you put up that concept plan back on the screen, but we will comply with the Angie's Code and I think that concept plan shows some green areas throughout the development that'll have neighborhood parks, I mean, pocket parks.
So those, all those green areas are going to be pocket parks?
That's the intent, open space and and parks, and there will be at least one pocket park for every two hundred homes also. And they're not all shown on there, but as the the property is plotted, those will be included.
Got it. So nope. And like I said, I have a lot of other questions, but I can ask those at a later time.
Thank you. Now we'll go ahead and open up comment to the public. Go on once.
Hi Karen, I've heard I live in the Knowles. So something I see happen here all the time, over and over and over. I've lived here for fourteen years now is that a developer will come in and say, I'm going to do X, Y, and Z, and then I'll throw in G and H. It's my intent. And then that never happens. None of those things ever happens. You can look at my own HOA where they said, oh, we're going to build a park and we're going to have a pool, maybe a resource center. And then they sold that to the town of Wellington before they had sold it to another member of development before that. And nothing ever happened in that. And my very big concern is that these things are going on. The town staff were just talking about how we need to get the plant paid for and how much in debt we're going to be for a while and how they want the residents to take on a lot of that burden through increased water bills, increased sewer bills, increased other bills. And so the town of Wellington staff really put a lot of burden on the people who live in this town, the residents. And to my understanding, the town of Wellington employees and the board of trustees are supposed to take what the residents want into consideration. I did hear when Ashley asked, sorry, trustee McDonald, asked Cody to say how people were notified about this meeting. And he said that there were a hundred and something mailed out to people and within five hundred feet. And a lot of that property, the three hundred acres, there is no neighbor. So I'm really concerned that nothing was put out on social media, as has been done in the past by administration to talk about this type of annexation ahead of time. And I really think that we should put a halter on this and give the whole town a chance to weigh in on it because we have so many developers that come in and say they're going to do all these great things and then they never happen or only a couple of those things happen. And we need to build up that commercial business so that we don't have more of a bedroom community like we do now. That's what everybody was talking about last year was how to get rid of being a bedroom community. Well, building more houses without having businesses here first is going to build a bigger bedroom community. We're already being taxed so much and we already pay too much for water and other utilities here. So a lot of people order online instead of going into our local businesses here. Because if it's cheaper to give it that way so they can afford to pay their water bill and keep their electricity on, guess what? They're going to go to Amazon. So plain facts of it all is that we're being taxed for all these things and you guys want to put a lot of this on the residents and the taxes and the water and the sewer and other ways. I've been complaining for, I think, a year and a half about how my development has never had one thing done to it by the town of Wellington for roadwork. You guys, have you driven around our town? Our roads suck. They're bopping and rolling everywhere. You come home from a surgery, good luck. I hope they give you enough painkillers. Are, we haven't done anything to take care of the community that we do have. And now we're trying to bring in three hundred more over three hundred acres. I don't know, I got those numbers mixed up. Three hundred acres worth of more residential. And I really think that we need to focus on our community that is here now, that has been here forever and has been here for a long term. And we need to see that development. The developer consider bringing in those businesses and put his money where his mouth is so he can show in good faith to the town of residents that he is doing what he's going to do, what he said he would do. It's time for the town to stick up for the residents.
Thank you. All right, I'll allow the developer or rebuttal.
Guys, hopefully I'm just not the normal developer. I was actually a builder before I was a developer. I think we we grew up in this community. My son, my daughter, my two brothers live in this community. Don't plan on going anywhere. Obviously can't predict the future. And we do know a lot about this site, but that said, you know, we've tried to get back to the Boys and Girls Club and back to the community. We want the zoning so that, yeah, we can plan accordingly so we can bring in the right businesses. I think you need the rooftops for the business that come. If you don't have the residential, I hate to see what happens when you only have thirty building permits a year here and who's going to pay the impact fees. So I mean, we're trying to bring in good builders. Since I grew up pretty locally, I think we can give diversity and affordable housing. But you know, every project is not the same. I mean, I I think the last subdivision I did, they do have a clubhouse. They do have good streets. I think we were the first developer to ever fly ash the streets and finally the town made it requirement because the roads were so bad. But you know, we're not perfect either. We screw up too. And that's why, you know, as we bring this through, where you're going to have to approve plats on the development, which holds us to the fire on what we bring. We hope to bring a great community and and again, it's going to be a fifteen, twenty, twenty-five year project. It's not going to happen overnight. So but I see the frustration and the roads do suck here. But I mean, you need impact fees to help pay for the existing town amenities. That's why you need good growth, so.
Thank you. Any further or go here motion to close the public hearing and adopt resolution number thirty dash twenty twenty three? We'll comment after the motion.
Yes, I had a question on procedures because I know we'll get into our board questions, but if we end up choosing that we felt like we need more time or there's questions and things that need to be answered because I know one of the things that was contemplated in the packet was pushing this forward so that we can ask questions, get those answered and bring it back. The question then is, do we need to close the public meeting or do we need to continue that? And do we need to make that determination now? Because we haven't had a chance- That's why I'm asking, because if I choose to, if I move to close it now, it's done.
Correct.
But if we end up feeling like we need more opportunity to have discussion, is it better to postpone it? But we haven't. That's the conundrum. Do we move to close it now or postpone it? Because we haven't had a chance to talk about whether we feel like we're good to take action tonight or if we want more time. So that's-
So, yeah. I believe if you would want to move for continuation, you would motion it, it would have to be seconded, we would do a roll call. And then that would determine whether it gets continued or we move forward with a regular motion. Is that correct, Dan?
Yeah, so I understand it's a process. The question is, is we as a board haven't talked about whether or not I don't want to just make the decision-
Oh, oh, okay. So you want to do board discussion before motion?
That that's my thought.
There we go.
That's because I'm like, if we haven't even talked about whether to continue it, I don't want to-
Do it. Okay. I get what you're saying now.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to push us into continuance if we don't feel that we need it.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I wasn't tracking for a second. We'll start with trustee Teets.
So one thing I do want to say is Sage Homes is not your average builder. I absolutely agree with that. And the first time anyone ever asks me, who do I go with to build? It's a no brainer for me. I don't have a bias. I'm just saying I've seen your homes since you started building in Buffalo Creek. I think that was one of the first subdivisions you guys came out. You helped me pick my first tree at your brother's house. So this isn't anything where I sit there and think that you are not going to do what you say you're going to do. I think some developers have created a bad image for the good ones in our area. I know the exact area that she is speaking of, so I can say, yes, absolutely, that was a bad decision. But that being said, I'm comfortable with moving this to continue for this for questions if we need to. But it's more along the lines of figuring out, there were some things in the packet that had not been yet answered that we were waiting on hearing further information on. So I would feel comfortable waiting to hear that further information that was coming to us. But my decision absolutely does not have anything to do with the fact that I think Sage Homes is a bad builder. I would absolutely say that I have seen Darren himself replace the driveway because his contractor saw a crack in it. So, and he didn't have to, but he did. So I think that if we were to pick a builder or choose a builder, I think that we have a very good choice and alignment in what we do have. But I would be comfortable trustee Gator moving forward and saying that I'd like to make a motion to ask more questions.
Could you clarify what was left out?
So I think Mr. Bird identified it in the first parts of the packet on items that you were still waiting on. So you were waiting to find out about water shares. It was not a guarantee that the water was sufficient enough for the raw water taps. We were waiting to hear on that kind of information. There was also the traffic study that you had noted that you were waiting on as well.
Yeah, Ben.
Trustee Teets, maybe you can help me out. I don't recall mentioning either raw water or traffic in tonight's presentation. Are you referring to a line in the packet?
Yeah, it's in the-
Can you point me to that, which page you're on?
Give me a minute. I have a lot of highlighted sections. Give me a minute. I have a lot of highlighted sections. Many of those components come later in the.
Later after an annexation, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of those.
So this is gonna come before us and future boards.
Yeah.
Multiple times before really anything happens.
Correct. We can't even figure out raw water dedication until we have the, the site platted. This is simply a zoning request.
Annexation zoning.
Yeah, so. Right, but it's part of a PUD.
They'll bring back subdivision improvement agreements that outline those specific details at later dates. What after, so they can't figure that information out until the zoning is approved. So if we don't establish the zoning to determine what the maximum potential build out is based off the zoning, then they can't do those protection. Projections for the subdivision improvement agreement. So those elements will come back before us again. In additional, when they have more information about their phases, they'll come back with those subdivision improvement agreements and there'll be individual negotiations for those.
Yeah, correct, but we are also waiting to find out about as far as funding for six years of a deficit for this built.
Quick, quick question, just as a. Information that the item that we're discussing right now for a motion relates to closing a public. The public hearing, correct? Not necessarily related relating to annexation or zoning.
We decided to have a discussion, is what I thought.
We are having a discussion, but to close the public hearing. Before a motion for a resolution.
Yeah, I guess it's, we need to determine whether or not we as a board feel comfortable with the information provided, which trustee Teets is sharing. There's some things.
Yeah.
She feels she would need.
Yeah.
And so I think it is a little bit of both because it's, we need to discuss if, if anyone feels like they're lacking information would need more than that would lead to, we should look at continuing, but if. The majority of the board feels, no, we're happy with the information we have, we can take action tonight, then we would wanna move to close them. So it's.
So would you wanna, do we just wanna save some time? And straight up say whether we want to move for a continuation? Or not?
I, I have a comment on that.
Go for it.
Uh, all the processes were followed for legal notification of this public hearing. Um, so everything was done in order and noted noted in places where we are, um, you know. Uh, legally obliged to do, right? Um, all within the, the area surrounding the property that's been discussed, right? We have had no public comment tonight. So. I, I'm sorry, of neighbors, that's what I meant. Sorry. I didn't mean that. Apologies, Karen. I meant of noticed properties. Um, I think that we did our due diligence and providing people the knowledge that this item is coming, those who are locally. Around it and who have been provided notice. Um, and based on that, I feel, I feel comfortable with closing the public hearing so we can move forward to discuss whether or not we are going to be. Accepting the, uh, annexation. And regarding the annexation and all the zoning, there's, and we're gonna have lots of questions, right? So, and we have a lot of documentation in front of us that we can ask questions on. So, um, from my perspective, I think the public hearing portion has been appropriately noticed and. We've completed that task. So I'm, I'm happy to move forward.
So if somebody wants to motion for a continuation, they would do so now.
So.
Close or?
Yeah. I'll defer my opinion and then you can go for your motion. Um, the only reason is I have some questions when we get into details that. And my concern is if we do decide to delay our initial end decision. There could be things that change in that that public might decide they want to comment on. That's why I would feel more comfortable continuing it if we choose to continue. That's why I was discussing that. So that's just my two cents on that, but I think, yes. Having a motion and putting a vote is a great plan.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, the only concern with a motion to continue the public hearing at this point would be that statute requires an hour of deliberations before a motion can, uh, to continue. A public hearing can be considered. Um, the public hearing for this meeting was opened at seven forty-one PM, so you have some remaining time before, uh, and, uh. Entertaining that motion would be appropriate.
And I think the intention of continuing is based on the fact that we have so much public hearing content that would cause for over an hour of deliberation. So I, that's, I, in my mind, that's the intention of that, so. But, uh, I'd be happy to put it to a vote or further discussions after making a motion if we can move forward.
Okay.
I, I moved to close a public hearing and adopt a resolution number thirty twenty twenty-three. Finding that the requirements of the state constitution and state statutes are satisfied for the. Annexation properties known as Sage Farms Annexation and Village at Sage Farms Annexation.
I'll second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
No.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, one against. The motion passes and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Mayor, if you would please close the public hearing.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, I now close the public hearing for resolution number thirty dash twenty twenty-three. Time being eight twenty-six PM.
Thank you.
All right, next item is going to be D three, Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, item D three, as we had introduced. A little bit ago, um, are two annexation agreements. Um, the annexation agreements, as I briefly introduced, are, um, a means of outlining. Kind of the terms and conditions under which, uh, development would proceed. Um, so the, the. Agreements are broken up into the two component parts, Sage Farms and the, and the Village at Sage Farms, the Village at Sage Farms being primarily the commercial area down along County Road fifty-eight. There's a little bit of, um, nuanced context to those items being primarily related to the, the uncertainty of. Timing, size, scope and, and infrastructure requirements for the south area. It's the area furthest away from, um, the town's existing infrastructure. Um, it's gonna take longer to get there as development's going to. If for it, for the south end to develop, it needs to have all the infrastructure in place between there and the town's primarily the wastewater facility. Which is about midway through the north, the south on this project site. So the very south end is gonna have to divert stormwater, or I'm sorry, wastewater. Um, north to a main line that then feeds into the wastewater treatment facility. Um, the other really big infrastructure component is the, the road improvements. This is at an area. Where State Highway one and County Road fifty-eight intersect. Um, these roadways are a state highway and what's identified as a commercial arterial corridor. Um, and they're built to a state highway standard, not an urban highway standard. Um, and County Road fifty-eight is a two lane, no shoulder, open ditch. Road section that would need some considerations and improvements, not to mention the intersection itself. Um, we've looked at a, a traffic impact study for this proposed development. And the impact study for traffic is anticipating, uh, intersection improvements at the county, intersection of County Road fifty-eight. And Highway one as well as GW Bush and Highway one. Um, those are actually, the Highway one and GW Bush intersection improvements were already contemplated as part of the Sage Meadows. Subdivision and Sage Meadows second subdivision is already, um, required to contribute, uh, some proportionate share, pro rata share. Um, of the traffic impact fees to, um, make those improvements. So this is kind of a continuation of the, the road considerations and overall traffic considerations. The interesting piece of that is we know that, that improvements are needed. C dot has looked at that traffic study and said. You're gonna need turn lanes, you're gonna need intersection improvements. And we said, well understood, we knew that too. Um, but the, there's no certainty in the timing of when they'll be required because that's contingent upon how s-. How fast or how slow the development builds out. And the, we know that the costs increase over time on average with inflation and other factors. And so we can't yet define the timing or the cost and we don't have designs for what are the actual improvements necessary to meaningfully address. All the public safety concerns related to traffic. Those details will be part of further engineering studies, further traffic impact studies and most likely to get down to County Road fifty-eight, Highway one. It's going to be kind of a layered approach as we, as phase one, phase two developments get built out, we'll have solid numbers we can rely upon for how many units, how many traffic counts. And we'll, we'll know more and more information as we go to be able to more meaningfully plan those, those, um, larger projects. That context, the timing, scope, costs, all kind of relates back to the, the vesting piece of that. And the vesting is identified and proposed in these annexation agreements. The developer is proposing twenty years for the, um. For the first part of this, the Sage Farms annexation and twenty-five years for the Village at Sage Farms annexation to. Accomplish the build out that they're proposing as part of their planned unit and phase development. The annexation agreements also, um, specifically speaking to the, the. Uh, anticipated road improvements that would be necessary, but not knowing exactly what they look like. Um, town staff reached out to the developer owner and said. You know, that's gonna be a pretty significant undertaking to figure out what is the right type of road improvement project and what that preliminary cost is and how to pay for it. What we proposed to the developer was that's gonna be a big lift for the town to take on. Why don't you participate in the cost of funding that project? Um, so town staff identified that to do a transportation and mobility master plan. And contemplate what would reasonably be expected from a planning level standpoint to improve roadways in that area. And do a road impact fee study to make sure we're assessing the correct. Road impact fees that would be contributing someday to those larger improvements. We felt like a two hundred thousand dollar price tag over the next two or three years would adequately cover the cost of hiring consultants. To perform the engineering work and the cost analysis work to identify those planning level estimates that would inform budget and other decisions. And we said, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Developer, why don't you participate by contributing half that cost? Um, so this, the annexation agreement for Village at Sage Farms contemplates the developer providing a hundred thousand dollars. To contribute to the town if the board appropriates it. Matching funds to undertake that larger transportation mobility master plan and impact study. Um. Other nuances here, the vested rights I mentioned are spelled out. Um, if there's any questions on the need and timing for that in the development request, we can answer that.
I've just got a quick one for you, Cody. I, assuming that a traffic impact study or any improvements are. Uh, uh, determined to be required for Highway one, obviously we. Can't do that ourselves, right? This would be a C dot project.
Correct, yes. And we would anticipate that C dot would be an active participant in the design. Construction funding processes for those. Um, but. The kind of the chicken and egg scenario that we run into frequently is if we go to C dot and say we think this intersection needs some attention, they look at our. Our town boundaries and our town, um, master plans, I think it's gonna go. What do you need us to do? It looks like it's functioning fine as is. And so the common response from, that we get from C dot is if you think there's a need, can you demonstrate that need and we'll react to your proposals? So that's, that's essentially what we're trying to do. We, we, we know that, that those intersections are going to need some attention. And we wanna be proactive in identifying what does that design look like? See, that would be a, a partner in that conversation. And start to put some pieces in place where we could then be proactive in applying for. Um, C dot grants that they have available through various programs for road improvements, widening other things. Um, we may be able to apply for funds through the, the TPR, the Transportation Planning Region, which we're currently a member of. Depending on timing and how things shake out, we could possibly be talking with the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, that deals with funding for the Fort Collins Metro. Um, so there's a couple of different avenues there to pursue assistance to make transportation improvements, but all of them kind of start with understanding what are we asking for? And how soon do we think we'll need it? So that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
Um, other questions so far? Vesting rights, timelines? The annexation agreement does also contemplate, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to offer that and then yank it back. Um, but one of the other nuances here was relating to the, um. Um, the park and open space areas. Um, as we mentioned before, the idea was to consolidate. Um, to make a more significant regional or community park type of improvement and kind of muster those, those resources into one area. The other thing that we've contemplated is if there, if there is a thirty-four acre park and open space dedication requirement for this master plan community. A portion of that might possibly go towards acquiring a more strategic piece of property that the town might have interest in. Um, and so the agreements do allude to if there is a more strategic property that the town is interested in acquiring. Potentially considering offset between developer acquiring a different piece of property, not in the subdivision and kind of an acreage per acreage. Um. Swap for still public dedication for parks and recreation space. So that's contemplated in the annexation agreements as well.
Couple quick questions. The impact fees, excuse me, they have to be used on that particular development. We can't use it around.
No.
We can use it anywhere in the city.
Imp- impact fees are, are collected for specific purposes and they're, they're collected for. The overall townwide impact that new growth has on the town. So we collect impact fees for. Water, sewer, road, parks, trails, libraries, all the things. I probably missed a couple. But none of them are tied to a specific development. Their town funds to be used as the town sees fit for addressing the additional impact of residential growth on or commercial growth, commercial plays impact fees as well. Um, so it's, it's townwide to be used at the town's discretion for the approved purposes.
Specifically for capital, right? Not for operations?
Yes, correct. Thank you, trustee McDonald. Uh, it's, the impact fees are for capital projects, not for operations like purchasing chemicals or paying for staff.
Quick, and then one more question. You had public, public districts in here, metro districts. How's that pertain to this new one?
Oh, thank you. Good, good question. Um, so when we're talking about annexation agreements, this is a pretty high level look. And some, I used, I came from Wichita, which is an aviation community. Um, they talk about thirty thousand foot. View, which is kind of the, where planes tend to, to operate most of the time. So the thirty thousand. Foot look at, at an annexation agreement is identifying what do we agree to and what do we not agree to? And the references to public improvement financing districts, tax increment financing districts, metropolitan districts and other. Uh, financing tools like, um, PIF or retail sales tax initiatives. What this document or what these documents are identifying is that the town. Has the ability to consider municipal financing options available through state statutes and other financing mechanisms. And that the town will consider those upon request of the owner or developer or subsequent developer that if, if they come and say, we'd like to do a tax increment financing district. We're simply agreeing in this agreement to say, we'll look at that with you. It still requires a process of town review, vetting, approval to make sure that those districts make sense for the project that's proposed. All this is saying is these are tools available to the town and we'll look at those upon request and make the right decision at the time.
Trustee Teets.
I don't have anything.
Trustee Gator.
So there are a few things that I have, uh, questions on within the, so the first is, as I know, I understand and thank you, uh, Darren for explaining the, the. Length of the project. And so I get that, but I mean, our standard within our town code, I believe, is three years. Um, and so the vested to go to twenty and twenty-five years. So a couple of questions on that. Do we have the ability to extend that? So if we. Do a ten year, is there ability to go into, if they come back and say, hey, we need an extension on this, to go ahead and extend that? Um, to make sure that we don't just have something that's sitting there for twenty, twenty-five years where there's nothing else that can be done on that.
So I think there, I, I heard that comments to be maybe, maybe two parts. One being, can we consider? Uh, extensions to a vesting period? And yes, you can. The board could extend a vesting period upon review and approval. The second part that I, I think I heard in there was, does that make sense for the developer? Is that a fair?
Well, I guess, no, it's really is just the first question. I guess is my concern is not saying this is what's gonna happen, but if we say, okay. Cause basically my understanding of the vesting is for twenty-five years, there's, it, it, whatever's here, that's it, it stays, there's, that's it. Doesn't matter what changes in the town in the next twenty-five years, even if not a single thing is built, it's still based on what this is today. And a lot can change over twenty-five. Now, if they've built everything out over twenty-five years, that's all well and good, but if they do nothing. For twenty-two and a half years and all of a sudden everything's changed, we're doing things totally differently. I'm not comfortable saying we're gonna commit everything for the next twenty years, especially if our stand, and I get. Standard is not a PUD, that's a different thing, but to go from. Three years, which I think is the norm per the land use code to twenty-five years is a really big jump. So my preference would just say, okay, maybe we go to ten or fifteen. And then if we need to re- renew it, that's fine. You know, if they're making progress, I hate not done great, renew it and make sure that we're up to date, but that's. I, I do have some concerns about the twenty and twenty-five years. Um, I understand length of project is gonna take time to get things through. I just, that's. Really far outside what we typically would contemplate within the code. Um, and again, I understand as a planned. You know, development. Um. So that's one area of concern. Um, the second. So that's one area of concern. The second was on page two ninety-four where it's kind of going through the contract and talks about development agreement. And it goes through all the different things, talks about the development agreements will be in place to further address public information or public improvements, excuse me, but then it goes into basically when checking to make sure everything is in compliance with wastewater collection, everything else like that. It says the design installation of which shall be in accordance with the planned unit development, PUD overlay districts and applicably applicable adopted town infrastructure master plans and applicable town standards. In the event of a conflict between the planned unit development overlay district, town infrastructure master plans and applicable town standards, the planned unit development overlay district shall control. That I have some concerns with understanding, okay, what things are laid out within this PUD that we're about to approve that may or may not conflicts with town standards, because basically this says, if we approve this agreement. And I don't, again, I don't know what in here would, but if something in here conflicts with a standard that we have for building, our standard doesn't matter because it's what it says here. So that just gave me pause because I wasn't, there's a lot in here to review in a few days. And that's something that gave me pause because it's something, again, especially for, we're putting this for twenty-five years. And there's something that doesn't, that's it, it, it goes.
I think, thank you, Trustee Gator, because that's a, a good point. And I, I think I can answer most of it. I might also tap Mr. Gowing for some of the other town standard considerations that could come into play here. But just let me frame some context. What, what that language is intended to do is acknowledge that as part of the plans unit development overlay district, the, part of the intent behind that is to identify things that are different than what could be accomplished through the town's baseline requirements for zoning, public improvements and otherwise. And so in the, the proposed zoning PUD for Sage Farms PUD, it identifies, these are the zone district categories and they reference back to the baseline zone, the underlying zone district of C one, C or C three, R one, and some variations of that. And it identifies, these are the things that are different from the town's baseline zone districts. It identifies different permitted uses, different prohibited uses for a couple of those commercial categories. It further defines differences in the, the setback requirements for front yards, rear yards, side yards, and it's, th- those setbacks are defined to accomplish what is being proposed for those different housing product types. It also includes a design standard for a little bit narrower roadway width that's narrower than what our town standards currently require for a local residential road. And so what this is saying is if there's a conflict between the town standard and what's identified in the planned unit development, it's saying, it's intended to provide clarity that we've already approved this standard. If there's a conflict, this is still governing because it was approved. If our town standards then change, they're, they still have a clear path. This is what was intended for this planned unit development. That is still the governing document. But what it does not include are public health and safety standards for roadway signage, for lane widths, for other standards that are very well documented and known that these are the, the right public safety issues. It's not intended to circumvent the town's other requirements that are not specifically defined here in the planned unit development document. So it's, it's really intended as a statement to provide the clarity for what do you do if there's, if there's contrasting information? And the PUD document specifically spells out, these are the things that are different than the town standards today that is expected to continue over the next couple of years.
Where was that? I know there was a lot that I was going through. So where was that specifically laid out? Because that was one of the concerns as I was trying to figure out, okay, what doesn't match?
It's on page three and page four of the zoning map for Sage Farms PUD. And I've, I can blow that up on the screen here too, if you want to take a look at it. Bob, do you want to speak to the town standards comments also?
So the, the engineering standards that they're proposing to change are very minor and they're shown graphically on the, I forget the name of the drawing, the zoning map. There's some street sections and alley sections in there. That's pretty much the extent of what they're asking for to be covered in the annexation agreement. Everything else, water, sewer, drainage, street, vertical design, horizontal design, everything else would be designed and built in accordance with our standards at that future time. And you had mentioned that plans are, the engineering approvals expire for a set of construction drawings after three years, at which point if the standards haven't changed, chances are those, those plans are still valid. But we're able to, because of the standards, the engineering standards that are kind of a separate document that are under the purview of the town engineer. If if there's anything that's public safety or health related, we can basically make that change on the fly, really. The town engineer has that authority in the code and certainly in the engineering standards as well.
Appreciate that clarification on the engineering side of things and, and it caused me to think back to just to kind of highlight that. The, the piece that's requested to be vesting or vested by the developer is, is really the, the zoning. But it's not, I mean, and the, and the zoning document does identify the alley section and the modified street section as well as some of the uses permitted or prohibited in the commercial zoning and the setbacks I mentioned a moment ago. But that document is really what is being vested. It's an insurance that the developer is providing. These are the different types of residential and commercial products that they want to accomplish. And if we agree that those are the right types of land uses for this particular property, this, this agreement is saying that all the parties, the town and developer agree that these are the uses that we think are right for that property. It's not going, it's not vesting or transcending any approvals for engineering standards beyond our typical vesting periods. It's not approving if a commercial site development is proposed in phase one, it's not vesting that particular commercial project for twenty years. That's what's, that specific commercial, like a pad site development, like a restaurant, would still be subject to the same three-year vesting periods for that approval. The twenty to twenty-five years is really focused on that four-page document identified as zoning map for Sage Farms PUD. And it focuses on the land uses and a couple of very specific road sections.
The other question I had is I know there was discussion within there about whether there's a regional park and whether that's put somewhere else. And a portion is paid to help the town acquire that. And I, you know, we currently have one, I would call a regional park with Wellington Community on the north side of town. And we contemplated putting a regional park here on this site because it would make, we already have one on the north side of town. It would make sense to have one on the south side of town. But then the question that comes up with that, does it make sense to have that at the bottom next to commercial or actually up by GW Bush? So that was another question is that a conversation that's been had in not, oh, well, let's put a regional park elsewhere. This potentially would be a great place to actually place that regional park. So we're not trying to go and find other facilities.
I can speak to that a little bit and I might call the developer up for his considerations as well. But just provide a little bit of background context. The, the way that this conversation started was identifying as part of a, a master plan community, consolidating all the, the park and open space into kind of one area resulted in a dedication requirement of thirty-four acres of park and open space. Not counting street strips, trail connections and other things, but a, a basically a chunk of land, thirty-four acres in size. For consideration purposes, Wellington Community Park up on the north end by Buffalo Creek is about twelve acres in size and about a third of that is open space and drainage in Box Elder Creek. So it's very possible to accomplish a significant and meaningful community park on a site smaller than thirty-four acres. And so that, that was essentially the, the kind of the kernel of that thought was do we want to have a thirty-four acre park and open space at the very south end of town where we're not going? The town's not expected to grow much further past County Road fifty-eight. So is that the right location to put that big of a facility where it's further away from the urban core and our residential base now? The thought being if there were a more strategic piece of property that the town was interested in pursuing that could achieve the park and open space and recreation needs of the community, does it make sense to offset site elsewhere with an equal acreage on this thirty-four acre park and open space dedication contemplated for this development? That's where that idea came from was kind of to what you identified is it's at the very south end of town. Is that the right location for, for regional and large community facilities? Or should we focus on getting some, some of those amenities back into the core of town?
Well, I think the part of it that for me really stands out with this is that at full build out, this is basically increasing our current population of the town by twenty-five percent of existing. So there's a proposed one thousand three hundred residential lots on this at full build out, according to what we saw here. And we're currently at four thousand two hundred, four thousand three hundred taps. So that's not perfectly equal, but pretty darn close to what are residential. So this is massive. So just this is going to basically be roughly twenty-five percent of our existing rooftops today will be added to the town. So even that is, that's a lot of rooftops. So even if we did have something in south, it may not be in the core next to downtown, but it's still, one, it's going to serve those communities that are south of downtown that really don't have a good option. And again, we're adding you know, another potential population of anywhere from two thousand to three thousand or four thousand residents in this community alone. That's, I think, would be very well served to have a facility down south. Even if we're not continuing to grow farther south, because really the only place that we've contemplated further growth is north and then east again. But again, if we're talking about today, we're not, we don't have thirteen hundred rooftops being proposed on the east side of the, or the north side of town. It's, they're being proposed here. So that to me would make the most sense. But again, that does, the question I had then is, okay, does having it at that far south side of the property really makes sense though? Or because it would be more accessible to other parts of the community up on the north side, which is relevant because that's what it's proposed to be zoned right now.
And thank you for that. I, I just, and point well taken because I think it's a good consideration. The other, one of the aspects that I'll just throw out there and then, and then I'll relinquish the, the podium here for a minute. The location of that park and open space was identified near the south end because that's the natural low spot where drainage is going. And the proposal would be to include not just the, you know, public amenities, like playgrounds, structures and things like that, but also to accomplish the open space via the drainage. So that, that location was identified as a, as a natural drainage area for, for the old hall site. That was the primary driver of the location.
I, I just need a little clarification there. Where did we get the one thousand lots number?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that and I'll share the document for you. But the, on the conceptual master plan document, pull it up here too for reference. It's, I'm sorry, I don't have the page number. But the, and it's one of the ones I printed and handed out for you too. But there, there's a table of land use data at the bottom and identifies maximum densities for the, for the areas. So the, the, it's a square footage or per acre, or acreage calculation of the area times the density consideration for that area. So there's, it's just a quick math calculation to figure out what the maximum residential density would be based on those acreages and the proposed densities.
There's an actual number. Let me find it.
Seventy-nine, it's specifically listed at the bottom of the page. One thousand three hundred and forty-six homes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I referenced the wrong drawing. What, what was the page number again?
Seventy-two seventy-nine.
Was also on the school impact page as well.
Thank you. And so, yeah, the number was specifically identified, but the way it was derived was the method I described for the acreage times the density proposed. So that would be a maximum density subject to further approvals.
Mr. Bird, I heard you mention a couple of times that that land dedication could be used for recreation purposes. How broad is that definition of recreation purposes?
The, I believe it's pretty broad, the, the Yeah.
There you go. That's what I was looking for. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Very broad.
So I do have a question related to that because I don't know if you've been to any of the retention pond areas or detention pond areas lately, probably in the last month. So when you add recreation and massive amounts of standing water and mosquitoes, so what we're pretty much suggesting is we're going to put thirty-four acres in with the drainage that assists the town. So that open space is really truly, at the end of the day, detention area with possibly some extra things included in it. So possibly a park, possibly what are the racquetball, not racquetball, what's pickleball? So, but at the end of the day, do we run into that issue? And I understand what Trustee Gator is saying is do we run into the issue where we've installed a pickleball rec court? And no one can play at it because of the standing water or we have dogs running into the, something that forms a coli. So it's kind of one of those things where is this going to be a functional detention area where there's filtration installed? Or are we looking at just what you standardly see?
That would come before us, I think, before any development would happen.
Do we see those plot plans? Is that before planning commission?
So I, you, yes, you're, you're correct, Mayor, and point well taken, Trustee Teets. What I can offer is that the, what this map is identifying is a, a location and is, and an acreage of what the park and open space dedication requirement would be and the rough location for, for where that would be accomplished. The actual design plans have not been initiated. They wouldn't be initiated until the, the drainage would be probably contemplated in phase one since it's intended to accomplish all of the drainage for the entire site. But we do, we don't anticipate that all thirty-four acres would be dedicated solely for detention purposes. So final designs to be submitted, reviewed and considered, but the, the intent is not to have a thirty-four acre pond that would be inundated by stormwater flows. More likely what we would expect to see is a, is a couple of ponds that would accomplish the stormwater drainage, stormwater. I'm, I'm dabbing into the engineering context and Mr. Gowing will come up here and tell me if I'm wrong. But the, the engineering design for stormwater is required to release water at historic rates and can't detain water longer than seventy-two hours in Colorado. So those ponds would be designed to be dry unless they are temporarily inundated by a storm. But not all of that area of the thirty-four acres would be intended to be underwater during a storm. It would be designed in a way that we would have usable park and recreation space for structures. We don't like playgrounds being underwater. We don't like clubhouses being underwater. We don't like any town facilities being underwater unless it's designed to be underwater. So there will be additional development proposals. And to whichever of the trustees or mayor brought it up, it would be subject to additional approvals. The plat for, we would expect phase one to include a plat of the stormwater areas, at least dedicating easements. And the design for drainage and easement plans would be contemplated in that plat for, for that, that would come back for planning commission and board approval. Thank you for the, good question, good point.
Can you walk me through where page four is? I see sheet one and sheet one of four, but I don't see sheet two, sheet three or sheet four.
Don't, do you have it in front of you?
Is that on these sheets that you gave us that you're talking about? The sheet page three or four is all the changes? Is it in this one here?
That to your prior question?
Yes, this is about the
Yeah.
Yes, I've been searching.
And our sheet three and sheet four show those. For the alley, yeah.
Are you looking at the versions that were printed and handed out?
I was looking on there. I wasn't sure. I didn't know.
Okay. Well, it's, it's in both. And hopefully I didn't get the pages out of order and what I, what I provided to you. But yeah, page three and page four of the zoning map for Sage Farm PUD is where those details are outlined. And my apologies, I think I got off on another question and didn't circle back to that because I was gonna, I intended to pull that up for a screen share for reference.
So where does it call out the specific differences? Or do we just have to literally compare this page to the land use code to find the differences?
The, the differences are defined on this document. The, it, it references it references the baseline zoning standards, except it's modified herein.
So when I'm looking at two, single family, A, R three, these are all the things that are different from the normal. Is that what I'm to understand by what I'm looking at here?
It's, no, it's not saying that these are all different. It's saying that this section for, for permitted uses is different. And this is what is intended for this area. The, and the, the purpose here, and we talked about this with the developers, they were putting this document together. My explanation was if this is the governing zoning document, we don't want to have to go back to the land use code to identify To identify what was intended, so the list of permitted and prohibited uses is intended to be inclusive for this development. Some of them do overlap between what is allowed under the town's base standards and what is allowed, or not allowed under the town's base standards. But this list of permitted uses and, and prohibited uses is intended to be all-inclusive for this proposed development.
And you, you put those on this document, because this document's recorded, so that it carries with time, right, whereas that information could get lost if we're just trying to.
That was, yeah, that was really the intent was to, if someone is looking at this development to decide what's allowed and what's not allowed, it's all here in one place.
Right, well, this also overrides our zoning, so if we change our land use code in five years, and we change our zoning map, this overrides our zoning. That's why I'm.
Yeah.
I, I'm glad to understand this, I didn't realize this was the case until tonight, so when I saw this before, I didn't know what all of this meant, I didn't realize this is different and overrides that. That's part of why I'm like, I'd like more time to understand what is different, but again, that's my personal. Again, especially for approving this for twenty years, this overrides our land use code, our zoning for the next twenty, twenty-five years. And so I really, I don't wanna be like trying to read tiny words on a page, because I didn't realize that these overwrote our land use code until half an hour ago. Yeah, it's in, it's in the packet, now that I know what I'm looking for, I've seen the page in the packet, but I didn't know what it all meant. So you can zoom it in on the computer, and so it's, it's definitely, again, it's seeing three hundred and sixty-three pages of documents. Trying to read through, we've never done a planned unit development before, so trying to understand what are the differences between this, cause normally. An annexation, all it is, is you're just approving zoning, this isn't just approving zoning, we're also approving changes to the zoning that will override zoning and land use code. Again, if we approve this for twenty to twenty-five years, that's for me where that's at.
I'm sorry, Cody, I need to verify something, cause I sent you an email earlier to verify what we were voting on this evening. And we are not voting on a P U D development, we are voting on the zoning. Of zoning and annexation with a P U D overlay. That does not guarantee that there, we're going to agree to the P U D, correct?
It's all includes, all the.
So that is not what was informed to me earlier today, cause a P U D, there is a very large list requirement in our land use code. That you have to have to present to the planning commission before they even vote to approve. And I mean, it is pages that needed to be completed if we're voting on a P U D.
So, so.
They're not there, that's the problem.
So I'll, I'll clarify, because you've, you're, you're on the right track, but it's, there's a little bit more to it than that, the, the. As part of an annexation proceeding, we contemplate the zoning of the property, as I mentioned before, when you bring it into the town, it's subject to town rules and regulations, so you accomplish the zoning. In this case, the developer has requested zoning of a planned unit overlay district. So this document is, is intended, or is proposed by the developer to be the zoning for the property. And again, we tried to put it all on one page, so it was concise, this is, this is what we're talking about. The planned unit development plan is a more detailed plan and the, and the code, the land use code, excuse me, I'll try to use the full terms. The land use code contemplates that this is part of a final planned unit development plan, it's associated with a subdivision plat for that development. The subdivision regulations of the town don't apply to this property, because it's not annexed into the town, so we really can't even talk about the subdivision process yet. And that's what the planned unit development plan talks about, is with the zoning in place. And a specific development proposal for a phase of development, and here's our plat to accomplish that proposed development phase. That all gets tied together and that becomes the, the P U D development plan for that specific phase. So what's being considered in this particular application for annexation and zoning is the zoning map that was included in your packet. And they're subject to, as the annexation agreements call out, subsequent development approvals for subdivision plats. The final planned unit development plan for each of those phases, so you're on the right track, but there's still additional work that has to be accomplished before. Any phase of development is approved with a plat and before any permits can be issued for those phases.
Okay, um, we just learned earlier that, you know, in a couple of years, we're open for business, right? Um, and we also learned that we don't have enough in our pipeline right now to maintain infrastructure and rate concerns for deficit. So those are the things I heard today, um, and then I, and then we also have a plan in front of us that gives us long-term. Like everything is in the pipe there for long-term, so I, I think that is a huge benefit, when we're talking about, we haven't done it like this before. I think that's good, because what we've done before is neighborhood, neighborhood, neighborhood. And then what I hear from people is that they want more commercial, they want a better balance, they want all these kind of things. This is um kind of accomplishing that and building it in a way that is planned and intentional, so this is. Oh, no, oh, I thought my computer just died right now, I was like, I have my notes right in front of me. Um, I'm talking about commercial and services being available in our town that previously weren't, and having that plan for the future. Um, it's such a great idea in my mind, and then there's huge potential for, of course, a giant park. Or a different area for a strategic park location, we've discussed that several times, maybe that's not the location, that's fine, but. We talked about maybe potentially a different strategic area would be better used, um, so I think that's a huge advantage. Uh, we mentioned affordable housing several times earlier, I do wanna just note that we're talking about like attainable housing, not like actual. Affordable housing by program, so I wanted to clarify that for everyone too, in case that was a, a word of concern. Um, but I really think we do need to challenge the way we're doing development right now, and I, um. I got some great insight from Prossen, actually, Cody was presenting at one point, talking about how parks serve as flood areas. So not necessarily in the state of like a detention area, detention areas we know are for the purpose of overflow, right? Um, I, that's probably not the right word, but you know what I mean for stormwater, in the case of a significant flood event, like massive, massive flood event. Good planning will flood your parks, not your houses, so that's. So when in, in the case that there is a horrible, horrible, horrible flood event. The sign of good planning and good development says that your parks are underwater, but not your houses. And so that's something I learned at Prossen that meant so much to me, cause I didn't understand that that's the other purpose of strategic placement of parks, so. That's really cool to know about planning for that, but these are the things that I wanted to draw from, cause I promised too in our other meetings. Um, those are my major takeaways, but I did wanna provide some other things that reference the comprehensive plan and our community survey. So in the comprehensive plan, we talk about, um, this intersection here that we're talking about fifty in highway one is determined and, and you know, through. Through resident feedback is a major center, uh, activity center for Wellington, meaning that this is a major entryway for our town. This is where people will come and go, this is like one of four, one, two, three, four, five. Um, one of them being the interstate interchange, but the major area where people will come in and out of Wellington, meaning access to parks. Uh, commercial services, all those kind of things is super essential, and that their map for the overlay. Is very, very close to exactly as it's indicated in the comprehensive plan, so I wanted to indicate that. Um, the other things from the comprehensive plan is there are, you know, four major themes of the comprehensive plan. The first one is uh, community cohesion and specific goals associated that in the comprehensive plan that say. Uh, we wanna enhance, maintain and increase recreational spaces and natural amenities, so that they can be enjoyed by all ages and abilities. Another one says they wanna ensure that existing and future residential developments contribute to enhancing quality of life. Um, in the thriving economy section, goal one was diversify the town's economic base. This is what our community wants and what they see in the future of Wellington, this is where they want us to be and what we should be accomplishing. So twenty years, that's a similar timeframe that we're looking at for accomplishing goals in our comprehensive plan. So these things are aligning really well in my mind, um, goal number four within thriving economies is develop a supportive business environment. That aids in creating the thr- a thriving local economy, goal two, I did that out of order. Balance commercial, industrial and residential land uses to ensure a variety, a commi- of convenient amenities and appropriate infrastructure. These are the goals that came directly out of our residents' feedback, um, the other section was reliable and resilient public service facilities and programs. And something that this project would really contribute to is a goal of ensuring a maintained level of service and efficient extension of services. Within the G M A, and then ensure new developments contribute to essential community services and infrastructure. Um, so those are the things I found are the major highlights, major goals, are the four top themes of our comprehensive plan. The other thing from the survey key findings that I find that relates to this directly is Wellington residents generally um feel safe and experience. Uh, a high quality of life, right, that was their first finding, the economy in general affordability is. For, uh, the economy in general affordability are priorities for residents, the fact that we have attainable housing here. You know, different variety type of housing that will have different price points, means that we will have options for more people. What I learned at C M L is that there is a concept of the missing middle, we don't have the high, we just have low. Just low, middle, high, high is like, you know, apartment building kind of thing. But that missing middle piece is where most people right now need attainable housing, and that's the, those kind of the. The examples that we looked at from Hartford before, that's the missing middle, that's where people can right now afford to live, and we don't have it, we don't have enough. At all, and we're missing that in our community, and that's one of the top priorities for C M L and getting people to attainable housing. You all went to all those sessions where they're like, how can we make hous- housing cheaper? Um, and then the other thing is that residents value Wellington's natural environment and park system, but support additional investment in recreational opportunities. If we don't do a planned development like this, we're not going to see a giant massive park in the future. Cause every, you know, every development only contributes so many, the percentage of area towards parks, right? But if we do it this way, we're gonna have the opportunity to have an entire park system, right now we have one full-size field in the whole town of Wellington. One field that they can play lacrosse on, one field that they can play football on, in an actual sized field, one, one field for soccer. That's all we have, is one full-size field, so I, just looking at that amount of space and what we could do, but that's not gonna happen until, unless we have a huge planned development. That's gonna a- uh, allocate a significant parts, parts to part, parts to parks, so. Try to talk fast and not take up all the time and organize that in a way, just to make, throw it all out there, so those are my findings, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I did wanna clear up a little bit, I, as far as my confusion regarding the one thousand number that was thrown out earlier, this. We, a- again, we, we do not have a plat plan for this, and the one thousand three hundred and forty-six is a. Maximum density number, and without a plat plan, we, we have no idea of knowing how many lots there's actually gonna be. Not only that, but according to these projections, that's over the course of seven years. Not only that, but Darren's also said that this probably isn't even gonna get off the ground for two years, so. I guess what I would say is, yeah, at the end of the day, I like the zoning of the P U D and the inclusion of commercial space, it looks great. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's absolutely clear to me that we need to add to our inventory of available lots, because without building permits and impact fees. It's gonna be extremely difficult to keep our water enterprise, enterprise fund in good standing without adding, you know, to an already substantial burden for our residents, so. Uh, uh, and again, the problem with purban projections and these types of things, you know, I'm not convinced we're gonna get to see even close to our projections over the next. Couple of years, just to considering market conditions and mortgage rates and that sort of thing, so at the end of the day, I think it's prudent that we. Add to the lot inventory and provide additional options for prospective buyers as, you know, we need to mitigate. Repercussions that could poten- potentially be passed on to the residents and already actively build accounts, so.
Agreed with the plat, we don't have any of that information, we won't for a long time.
Are we, are we kinda like wrapping up some final comments here, is that kinda what we're doing, going down the line, I guess?
Yep. Well, that public comment, I guess, but yeah.
Okay, couple of bullets, first, I wanna address the integrity of the developer. I've had the opportunity to work with this developer from multiple angles, and the integrity of this developer is top shelf. Um, I would agree with the public comment that there had been um situations in the past where developers made promises that they didn't follow through on. Um, I had the opportunity to be a part of one of those community movements when the, the community park was built. Um, so I have a hundred and ten percent faith and belief that the integrity of this developer is top shelf. And he will provide the product that he says he's going to deliver. The other thing, or element or bullet, and I hope I'm not getting too far ahead of myself here, is. Really listening to some of. The key terms that the staff was providing relative to long-range vision for the public space piece. When I asked Mister Bird about what that broad range of recreation opportunities could potentially be. He also mentioned a couple of times that that land would be, could potentially be used for public purpose. Like there's a little bit of, of wiggle room there, so what, what is that one thing that the community has been talking about for years? That I'm sure is gonna be the top platform item in the next election? A recreation center, and right now, the inventory space available in town. We, we don't have that space, and what this P U D does is gives us an opportunity to have. Some, a lot of opportunity for some really great amenities for the community, including those pockets of commercial. Within residential zoning, so the P U D overlay is brilliant, I'm really excited about this project and this opportunity. I just hope that the developer um decides to wait to retire and can see the project through. Um, so I was really, um, I'm, I was excited to hear that it's a twenty-year project. And that this um developer is, is the one bringing this, this plan to the table, so I think this is a, a good idea for the Wellington community.
Trust me again.
I do have a sage home that I live in, he is a great builder. Uh, you know, from what I'm seeing here, this is gonna be over the twenty, twenty-five year period of time, almost a billion dollars, is that correct? You know, what he's wanting to have at this point is some assurance that we're not gonna just change everything. Uh, so he does have a consistent plan to work off of, so I can see his reasoning for the vesting part on that. Uh. As far as the park down below, uh, the thirty-some acre, you know, that is part of the drainage plan. You know, you gotta have that, but you know, you gotta figure out how many other areas are gonna have that much of a designated area. So I mean, it is going to be a very much a boom for the town. And plus, we still got all the small parks through the community too, as per required by the code, so, uh. You know, I, I think it's, uh, probably something we definitely ought to seriously consider, giving him the approval on. Uh, you know, he's making a huge, huge investment into the town. You've already know the character of him, what he's given back to the community. Uh, not necessarily all that we wanna hear at times, but overall, I think he's done a pretty good job, so, thank you.
So I would like to clarify something, my concerns are not that the P U D is a bad idea, or that Mister Roberson has done a bad job. I, I, I think he's done a good job, and I like this planned out. Let me just read a paragraph on page two eighty-nine. Town staff and develop, and the developer acknowledged that the non-potable irrigation system discussions, as well as expected questions and direction from the board. Will result in the board desiring to continue consideration of the annexation agreements to a later date. I'm saying I have questions, some of those questions were answered tonight, some of those raised more, I'd like to make sure that I understand those questions, so I can feel confident in saying, yes, this is a good idea, let's move forward to it. That's it, I'm not saying this is a bad idea, I'm not saying I disagree that we need more space, I'm not saying I disagree, I'm saying. We've never approved a P U D as this board, maybe others have, I have not been on a board, so this is a different, this isn't just a zoning, right? With a normal thing, if we approve zoning and zoning changes, it changes, we approve the zoning, it doesn't change, that's it, for the twenty-five years. And so I wanna make sure that I understand what I'm voting on, that's it, I, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm saying I would like to make sure that I understand that, and. Tonight at nine fifty, nine twenty is not the time to get that all worked out, so that's all I'm asking for, is I'd like to make sure that I can understand, get answers to the questions. And in here, it sounds like there's still, I'd like to know, do we have for sure in the non-potable, I know they feel they're fairly confident in that. There's a difference between fairly confident and an agreement that, that's all, so I don't know if that piece has been resolved yet or not, that just, that's just reading off what's in the packet, so. It, it said pending in our packet with the non-pot, so I don't think that's been resolved yet.
They, they, yeah, they won't, they won't be able to, right, cause of what the irrigation is there now would interfere with the pivot.
Yeah, so I, maybe you could shed light on that, cause it just, it was in the packet that it was pending, and then it was called out here specifically as well.
Yes, we gotta have the wells tested, we have the decree, we have the acre foot, um, we're gonna have to take it through the process of the platting to make sure it's adequate at each phase. Um, I know Bob and them needed additional testing, that we couldn't just flood the farmer out, even though the wells have been. Uh, one's a coffin well with over four hundred and forty acre feet of water allowed for that, just one.
uh, one's a coffin well with over 440 acre feet of water allowed for that, just 150 acres. There's two wells, one on the site, one on Fort Collins farm site. So each well will contain on its 150 acres. So, and I totally agree. I mean, we've been living this project for five years. You've been living it for three days. Yeah. Um, and that, and we've all been working on it. And I think hopefully you agree that the staff is guiding you well, but I can totally understand your point. I also hopefully you see my point on the zoning. We have so much invested that I think in some of your last board meetings, there was a marijuana close to housing. Well, I've just fixed that because I don't want it.
Right.
So that's why we want the P U D overlay. So it dictates and someone's not going to come in in five years and say, hey, we're going to change it. Because if they're going to change it, let's just pull it right now. Because originally I wasn't going to plat even the far end on 58. Cody pushed saying, you know, we really want that commercial as part of our planning and that way if we have it and it's annexed, we can go out and ask for things. Um, I was ready to pull the whole thing and not do it. So there's been a lot of give and take and butting heads with town staff. And, uh, but again, I think, I think we're close. I totally agree. If you need time, um.
And I don't need much. I just, had I known that this is all that entailed, I would have.
And ask some questions maybe here in a couple of weeks. It is.
And I'm totally fine with that. That, that's my ask. Now again, the rest of the board can decide to move on it tonight. That's just my concern is I would like to have some more time to make sure that I feel confident in what we're doing.
But it is absolutely, you know, false and we don't get our vesting, um, part of it and some of these things, we're going to pull it.
No, I, I believe that.
Yeah, because we just don't need it. So.
Quick question, the water dedication, all those items, those occur at the plat level of the development plans? When, when does that occur? Because that would normally not be a final determination until what stage of development?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, trustee daily and, and thank you trustee Gator. Cause if I can come back to trustee daily, because I, I agree with trustee Gator. We did specifically highlight a section of both annexation agreements related to the non potable wells and we, we own that. We, we thought we were close when we started the process, but it turns out there's lo and behold, water's complicated. So we wanted to make sure that we get that language correct and, and, and needed to get that a little bit more time. So we fully expected that the annexation agreements would be continued to a later date and we support doing that as developer indicated that they would as well. To answer all the questions. Um, so back to, to trustee daily's comment on, on water dedications and water contributions. Water contribution requirements are, are typically satisfied at the time of a permit. So a residential unit, when they come and pull a building permit and they pay their application fees and their impact fees, they also have to satisfy raw water. Town's current policy is that raw water is provided via shares and we've had communications with Mr. Roberson that he does intend to use some combination of shares and cash in lieu to satisfy raw water requirements. Final numbers to be determined, but the, those decisions do happen at a later date as part of development agreements for those phases that outline more specifically what those water contributions are. But I also want to provide some assurances that it's not like we don't know what to expect for raw water. Are the town's raw water contribution requirements contemplates an indoor use for residential and an outdoor irrigation use? The proposal for this development is to use the existing aggregation wells to satisfy all of the outdoor irrigation needs. We do still need to do some final testing to verify that that'll work. Most likely what those tests are going to tell us is that there's adequate supply, but the developer may have to make some improvements to the pumping systems, the well casings. Some of the things to ensure that it can operate at that level of efficiency to provide that. And he'd have to make those improvements to satisfy that, the, that the pumping and, and system can provide it. The other component to the raw water contributions is the indoor, which is defined by town ordinance. We've, um, updated that a couple of times not too long ago. Um, and define how many acre feet are required for indoor use. So a quick calculation would, would lead you to total number of units possible under the proposed zoning. Point two, five per indoor, outdoor satisfied by wells. That's going to give you a number that we can rely on for the raw, raw water contribution requirements for this development. And in terms of water supply, the developer or the, or the person pulling the permit is required to satisfy that raw water component at the time of permits. So water supply is satisfied as these things get built out that they're providing the water to the town. So I hope that kind of helps re- remove some of the, the mystery around the water component, but there is still some specific language that we need to get dialed in and bring back to the board for further consideration.
So we still need that and that would be part of the annexation agreement, whatever you guys come back with for non potable, correct?
For the non potable.
The, the number 14 in the agreement. Okay.
Yeah.
So, so that's where my concern is coming from about wanting to delay is I'm not pulling things out. I'm pulling things directly from our packet. So, okay. I'm, I'm getting a lot of looks of why you keep asking for this to be delayed. So that's the reasoning is it was specifically called out that there was still more to do on that. And I do have some questions that I'd like to have, just be able to answer those. I, I, I think it's a good idea.
Cody, can I verify? We did approve the zoning?
No, that, that has not been approved. That's part of your consideration.
All we've done is the, is the public hearing.
You've closed the public hearing and you've adopted a resolution stating that the findings required by state statutes in the Colorado constitution have been satisfied. So you've closed the public hearing portion of the annexation. You, you're now on agenda item D three, which is contemplating the annexation agreements. And we presented that first because there's a lot of meat to those agreements that have some nuance to your overall approval consideration. But the, the next item on your agenda is D four, which is contemplation of an ordinance that would approve the annexation and the zoning. And if the annexation, the overall, going all the way back to my introduction, all of these items are really integrally tied. And so if one of them gets tabled, you probably want to consider tabling all of them to kind of keep it together. So you don't put the, the board, the town in a position where, well, we approved that. So now we have to do this. The idea was to keep all this together and move it forward together and get all the questions answered that need to be answered to, to build the confidence if the town board does want to approve it. So if the annexation agreements are proposed to be continued, I would recommend continuing the ordinance. That's your next item.
So do you feel like you can have the wording and things prepared for the non potable irrigation system by our next meeting on the 12th? I, I just, I, I don't know. Cause I, I don't, I don't like approving things, saying we'll plug something in later. So if there is something that needs to go there, you know what needs to go there. I don't know.
And, and we're not seeking approval for that. Um, as a staff report alluded to, um, we knew that there was at least the non potable irrigation. We would also like direction from the board. If there's other items, I made some notes about looking at the vesting period timelines. If there's other questions, we want to know those too. So, because it helps inform what we bring back to this board. And I, and short answer, I don't think the number is it the September?
September 12th.
12th. I don't think that we're going to have all the answers to all those questions on that timeline.
So the question, if you don't anticipate that, why is it one of the numbered lines in the agreement? Cause that is actually in the agreement, number 14, non potable irrigation system. Then it just says subject to further negotiation. Is that the actual planned language that we're?
No, 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 that's the part we want to, we're suggesting that this be continued to allow time to fill that, that section.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I missed.
Sorry. Cause it sounded like you said, well, no, we weren't actually expecting you to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was asking, are you actually planning the agreement to have something there?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I, yes.
Yes, okay.
I misunderstood.
That, that was my question. Okay. So there is planned, something will go there.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I'm sorry, my, my misrepresentation was that we didn't expect that the board was going to adopt the annexation agreements tonight. So we weren't, see, we weren't expecting approval if the agreement was presented.
Got it.
We were expecting to fill that piece in, bring it back and take any additional guidance or direction from the board to help inform what these drafts look like when they come back to you. And I would suggest that an appropriate date that makes sense for, for town staff. I think the September 26th meeting might make more sense for us to get some of those things pulled together.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Bird.
Thank you. My apologies for the confusion.
Trustee Gator, if I can, so one thing I am aware of is these P U D developments. The 20 year, 25 year is not excessive. So when you're building it in platted sections, it is not, not excessive to see the 20 to 25 year. I did verify that with someone that does build because I did want to know if that was an excessive amount. And that from my understanding was something that was reaffirmed. And I don't disagree with the slow building out of that area because it keeps us in line with the slow planned proper growth where we're being active instead of reactive to all these developers coming at once, once we open up the permits. Um, so I do appreciate the fact that if we build out that area over the next 25 years, we build it takes a long period of time to build out that area. I'm okay with that. Um, so I, but I just wanted to clarify because that is something that I am aware of is the longer time is not an abnormal thing to experience with the P U D.
Correct. So I'd like to make a motion to get us moving along. So I'd like to move to continue consideration of the annexation agreements for Sage Farms annexation and the village at Sage Farms annexation to the regular board of trustees meeting to be held on September 26th at six 30 PM at the Wilson Leaper Center, 3800 Wilson Avenue, Wellington, Colorado.
I second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Daily.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Portim McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously and consideration of the agreements will be postponed to the 26th, September 2023 regular meeting. Thank you.
Can I ask a general question? How will this impact the possibility of getting the interchange off the interstate down there?
We hope, we hope positively.
Positively? Okay. Do we have anything kind of in in formation at this point, uh, at all?
No, a, a great question, one that the town staff has thought about a lot. And that was essentially really part of what was pushing as Mr. Roberson alluded to. Staff fought very hard to get him to commit to bringing in the full 300 acres, including the commercial aspects on County Road 58. What staff didn't want to be in a position or the town to be in a position where we approve more residential rooftops without any additional consideration for commercial aspects. And because our comprehensive plan identifies County Road 58 as a commercial corridor, and our comp plan identifies, um, the, uh, I 25 and County Road 58 overpass as a potential future interchange. Um, that's still a long ways off. There's, I mean, projects like that don't happen overnight. But we don't have a lot of room to go back to C dot and say, now is the right time to start thinking about that because they're going to, like I mentioned before, they're going to look at us and go, why? We're trying to generate some interest commercially. Mr. Roberson's trying to get commitments from UC Health um, to look at this as a, as a planned medical campus facility that would start to generate interest. Other, uh, you get an anchor like a medical campus starts to attract other types of, um, related medical office uses outpatient. Hopefully some continuum of care, housing products for, um, a range of, of resident needs and create the jobs. With that kind of energy and synergy, um, with a commercial development proposal and the, a corridor access like 58, we hope to spur C dot's interest and the T P R's interest and the M P O's interest in helping us find avenues to make that possibility become a reality. Um, they don't happen overnight, but they don't happen without a plan. So we're trying to create that plan.
So that would definitely help spur this on and, uh,
That is absolutely.
Right. And it wouldn't have to be to the end of the development. I mean, once we got that some planned, we can take that to C dot. And at least get that possibly in line.
Right. And I, I think it would also, yes, in short, um, it's the, the first step in that process. I would also reasonably anticipate some board direction to pursue municipal financing options like a tax increment finance district to help of, you know, accelerate a project like that. And I don't want to explain a tiff tonight, but, um, certainly happy to do that at a later date. There, there are tools out there to, to incentivize and accelerate commercial development that would result in, in consideration for interchange at I 25 and we want to pursue those options. This, I think is a catalyst to help us do that.
How about, how about this? Let's take a quick recess.
Five minutes.
Of, uh, parkland for in pedestrian overpass. I would totally go for that one.
I now call the regular meeting, the Wellington Board of Trustees back in session, time being nine forty two PM on August 22nd, 2023. Um, okay. The, uh, next item for consideration is D four, Mr. Bird. Just make it brief. We know it's going to happen.
Well said. Thanks, Mayor. Um, just very, very quickly. The item D four is consideration of an ordinance, um, for approving annexation and zoning. Um, and because the board, uh, just voted to continue the consideration of the annexation agreements, all these things are interrelated. Staff recommends that you also continue the ordinance consideration to September 26th, 2023.
I will move that we continue consideration of ordinance number nine dash 2023 to the regular board of trustees meeting held on September 26th at six 30 PM at the Wilson Leaper Center, 3800 Wilson Avenue, Wellington, Colorado.
Second.
Clerk, can I get a, a roll call, please?
And just to clarify, that was delay to, uh, the 26th of September.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Understood.
That's the right day, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, roll call. Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Portim McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously and the item will be continued to the September 26th, 2023 regular meeting.
Perfect. All right. I now close the regular meeting and open the liquor license authority board, time being nine forty four PM. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mayor Shosse. In the interest of time, I'm going to do a recall and present from this chair.
Number four.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Portim McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Ready for me to proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, board trustees. I'm Ethan Moose, the town clerk. It's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. Uh, the item to consider at the liquor license authority board is a renewal application for Hung Lu Investments LLC doing business as Papa's Table. They're requesting renewal of the beer and wine city license. Um, they've, excuse me, a review of the application found the establishment in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. The establishment is in, is current with sales tax and the Lemer County Sheriff's Office reported no issues directly uh, related to the establishment's liquor license. The establishment has legal possession of the premise, uh, via lease, and there were no issues or concerns during a visual inspection. Happy to take any questions you may have on this item.
Trustee Gator.
Just wanted to clarify, there were two items that were noted on the L C S O inspection that they, they fixed and addressed both of those concerns with just, it's just more about where things were placed, I think. I don't know if you know, I know, uh, Corporal Baker did the fore.
It's not part of that, that particular inspection. So I'd have to refer to my corporal.
Okay, uh, Ethan or clerk Moose, did he, did Corporal Baker talk to you at all about his notes on the inspection?
Um, I, I, I did not have any direct conversations with Corporal Baker. However, however, he did indicate that they were in compliance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
All right. Any, uh, comments from public on this agenda?
No.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve the Hung Lu Investments LLC DBA Papa's Table Beer and Wine Liquor License Renewal Application.
I second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Portim McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Teets. Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously and the renewal is approved.
I, uh, now, now close the liquor license authority board. Uh, reopen the regular meeting, time being nine forty seven PM. Uh, let's see, any reports from Mr. Sepienza?
No reports from the town attorney today. You'll hear enough from me at tomorrow's meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
Just one item, um, wanted to remind, um, the trustees and anyone that's listening that there are some vacancies on our boards and commissions. Um, for the finance committee, we have two terms available and the Wellington Housing Authority has one term available. Those applications need to be submitted by noon on August 24th, 2023. We also have one vacancy on the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Board and that application is due. We also have one vacancy on the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Board, and that application is due by noon on September seventh, twenty twenty three.
Thank you. Staff reports? None. Um, four reports, trustee Gator.
All right, so I just, I hope I use the microphone, um, had a couple of items for you guys from the planning, or not planning, I'm sorry, Finance Committee. Um, so I did put in front of you the ordinance, that's why this is there, we'll get to that in just a second. Um, two questions first, these should be pretty quick. Um, within the Finance Ordinance, it does talk about the reviewing of reports generated by outside consultants in our planning calendar. Um, staff is going to be bringing back to us the recommendations based on the RAFT Talis, um, every year changing the rates. And the question was whether or not we wanted to have any input from the Finance Committee on that because they would meet a week or two after we see that information. So the question is, is do we want them to look at that and give us any input or just let us deal with that all ourselves? So just, I just need to know whether or not we want them to give us any input on that.
On the RAFT Talis?
Uh, basically, staff's going to bring a recommendation or thoughts on what we should do with rates for water and sewer, and that comes based on what RAFT Talis did with the rate study, which I think is the five percent and four percent that they alluded to earlier, that's just going to be coming to us as an official item for consideration. And the question is, is after that's presented to us, do we want the Finance Committee to take a look at that and send any feedback that they have on that to us? Or not? If the answer is no, that's fine, they just need to know whether or not they should plan on.
That'd be, that'd be, that'd be a pretty tight timeline for budget, right? No?
I wouldn't look at it in the terms of of budget timelines, I, um, what I expressed was that this was a report that had been reviewed by the Water and Sewer uh, roundtables, and then the Board of Trustees had also reviewed it last year. If it was a brand new report, it, I believe that would make sense for the um, Finance Committee to do a review of that. I wasn't sure if this was something that we wanted to um, have the Finance Committee spend time on since it had been already through multiple reviews, but up to the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, and and that's just, I just want to know from you guys, because we don't want them to.
My question would be, is there anything that the Finance Committee could offer, is there, what is the, what would be something that would benefit if it went to the Finance Committee? What would be that benefit to report back?
I think the only thing that I would see as a benefit, again, it's not a new model, we already, it's the same model, we're just plugging in our existing numbers and also looking at the recommendations. It gives us the opportunity to have some resident input that look at things from a financial aspect, that's really where I see the benefit is just a second set of eyes on it to say, hey, thought about this or not. But it's up to you guys, if we don't want to look at it, we don't need to, I just need to let them know what you guys want to do either way.
So possible recommendations on where we can save money to decrease.
So basically, as I understand it, on the nineteenth, we're going to get a presentation from staff on nineteenth of September, there'll be a presentation of the utility rate adjustment. And then I, yeah, I don't remember the timeline, Patty, it was either at the end of September or in October, we would be then looking at approving rate changes based on that presentation. And so it would just be a matter, if we had them look at it, we could have their recommendation as part of our packet when we actually go to approve it. Or we can literally just do it all ourselves, so.
I don't know if it would hurt any to have the Finance Committee look at it, so I think that if we have feedback from Finance Committee, it's not going to hurt, these rates won't go in effect until twenty twenty four?
Would you do it at a regular, I think I missed this, would you be doing this at a regular Finance Committee meeting?
Yeah, it'd just be at the one, it would just go on their agenda for their September meeting.
Let's, I mean, why not, like, we don't need to beat it around the bush. Um, because you're, I mean, it's just advisory, I mean.
Yeah, it it's advisory, we're not tied to what they say, it's just, it's another.
Yeah, I mean, why not? What?
Okay, um, we have scheduled the adoption of the utility rates for the September twenty sixth Board of Trustee Meeting. And we'll have first reading on, so we'll have a first, essentially first reading on September twelfth.
Perfect.
And then second reading will be um, September twenty sixth, so we'll have opportunity for public engagement. And we're also presenting that at the August, so you, utility rate presentation happens at a work session on August fifteenth before the Board of Trustees, where you're sit around a table, you guys can talk about it. And then there'll be two opportunities for public comment after.
Um, quick feedback on that one.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, you're still going.
Fifteenth was a week ago, I'm looking at, yes.
Septembers.
There we go, yes, I'm like, oh my gosh, you're right.
Uh, the process and methodology of adopting what we did took months and months and months, so my hope is if the Finance Committee is looking at it, they're not changing methodology or any of the.
Yeah, it's all, it's advisory.
Function.
No, they're not, they 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 had, they had said, we really, if the Board of Trustees doesn't want us to look at it, we don't want to look at it, they wanted to know from you guys, like, I don't think they have a problem looking at it, but it's not, they're not going to redesign anything, it's just going to be, this is what's being presented and recommendations. Yeah, perfect, okay, second question, um, for last year's budget, we had a member of the Finance Committee who gave input, so when we did our work sessions where staff came in and kind of presented anything, we had one member of the Finance Committee. Um, I think our chairs, as long as he can work in his schedule, Mr. Redavid's planning to be there for that. Uh, the question that falls into that, do we want him to just show up for that and give input? Or do we want the Finance Committee to look at the budget before our meeting, because they would basically meet the day before ours so that they can all give their input to Mr. Redavid to bring to the meeting, or do we want to just have Mr. Redavid come in, so for the normal meeting, it would make no difference. For the second meeting where we look at the second half, which is public works, they would just need to schedule a special meeting, and what's planned is that literally when our packet comes out, they would just look, they would just have what's in our packet, so staff's not creating things early or anything like that.
Let's go with the option without a special meeting.
Perfect, okay, so we'll just have to, so, and everyone, is everyone good with Mr. Redavid, who's the president, just joining us for that work session, so he can give input while we're going through stuff from the Finance Committee side like we've done in the past? Perfect, okay. Final thing, and this is where the ordinance comes in, um, on item uh, F, under Finance Committee Advisory Board capacity, it's to to provide independent review of town's financial reporting processes, internal controls and independent auditors. So really, they're looking for what is the intent of that, because I know one of the things that they did a lot of last year was they looked at different policies for finances, and their question was, does policy equal internal controls or do we see those as differently? So basically, they want to know, what are we expecting of them for number F in terms of providing independent review of reporting processes and internal controls, is that looking at things like policies, what does that look like?
I think that the Finance Committee has been going for a while now, and I think it's probably due for a review for us to determine their roles and responsibilities. And this, this is a great time to bring that up, so I would love for us to, within like a working session or an another, like more focused conversation, maybe talk about what they've been doing, accomplished, and what the future should hold. And then maybe we we might recon- uh, consider some revisions or any changes that might be necessary for the Finance Committee. I don't know, is anybody else interested in doing that?
No, I completely agree, because I.
You might as well, yeah.
I, for, when we get to my board report, we have another advisory committee that I I'll let trustee Gator finish his, and, but I have a similar concern, so I think it is time for us to revisit those roles and responsibilities of advisory committees.
So do we want to do that as a joint work session with the whole advisory board, or do we want to maybe just do a work session where we bring in the president of the board to have him, so I think it's.
I'm just talking about us.
I think, I think we review what what the purposes of it.
No, we do, I'm saying, I think it would be helpful to have a representative from the committee there to speak to that, I always, yes, I did all the meetings, but I don't, I don't, I like to be able to separate what the board says, and my opinion as a trustee, so I'm thinking either one of two ways, we could either do a joint work session so we can talk with all the members of the board, or we could just bring the chair in so that they can speak to any questions you guys have about, okay, what are you doing, what have you accomplished, Mr. Redavid can just speak to that directly, does that make sense?
Bring the chair, so you don't have to deal with a lot of different schedules.
Perfect, yeah, okay. I will take that back, that's all I got, thank you.
Perfect, uh, any other board reports? Trustee Daily.
Solid waste, um, we met last week, probably, um, we are, the I G A was a concern, a lot of the dates and items in I G A are no longer applicable based on just general climate of everything, um, they're still in negotiations with Republic on whether or not um, they would be managing operationally the new waste shed, they have not made progress on that so far, so um, the task that we did provide to that group, though, was to go through the current I G A and have the TAC Committee, Technical Advisory um, Committee strike anything that's no longer applicable or or doesn't apply likely to the I G A for us to review at our next meeting. Um, and I guess my challenge beyond that is to to maybe redefine what should be part of the intergovernmental agreement. So uh, that's more to come on that, but right now they're going to recommend items to strike from it, because they're just not projects that we're working on anymore, the dates were two years ago, you know, anything like that, just to make it more valid and future-proofed is my goal anyway, so. Um, as we get that, I can distribute, you know, some of their strikes, and so you guys can review it too, and let me know if you have any questions or comments. Um, but otherwise, we're still meeting, the next time we'll meet is in October, so it'll be after October. It's quite a while.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, the other updates I have is Sparge Toberfest is hosting a five K. It is on Saturday, September sixteenth.
Yeah.
My eyesight's not doing great right now. And during that event, you may or may not have the opportunity to have a town trustee in a dunk take. So I just want everybody to know, all of our listeners, that, and they they phrase it in a certain way, as if you're frustrated with your water rates, you can come dunk a trustee. That's how they did it, but, I mean, for any reason, just for fun, that would be fine, too. And then uh, mingle on Main Street is on August twenty fifth.
I did it last year, I won't be there this year.
Uh, there's also going to be a former mayor, apparently. I wonder who that could be? Okay, mingle on Main Street uh, is one of the Main Street Programs events, it's going to be on August twenty fifth from four to eight P M. A bunch of businesses are participating, and then ongoing through September, there's still the Main Street Market on Thursday nights, which have been wonderful and beautiful in the park, just where but spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those mosquitoes, got to watch out for those.
Yeah, that's all I got, thanks.
Mayor Portem.
Um, had a contact with a county commissioner, they expressed some concerns relative to the solid waste council, and I had, was an opportunity to have a brief discussion with trustee Daily about that, as well as um, our town administrator, and requested that maybe we have a future work session to kind of discuss some of those uh, concerns that are coming out of that I G A as well as talking about the roles and responsibilities when we're participating on an advisory committee or when we have advisory committees and they're not serving their proper purpose, or they're not effective. All of our time is extremely valuable, and we want to be effective when we're serving on these these councils or or committees and sho- showing that same respect for citizens that are dedicating that time, so this is one in particular that it's starting. There are some concerns that are starting to come about, up out of it that I think impact the long range solid waste services for this community that I think it's good for us to have a conversation about it in a work session, so I'll continue to work with trustee Daily and our town administrator about the proper time to have those discussions in a work session. Yeah, sorry.
Perfect. Perfect, trustee Wigan. Okay, uh, trustee Teets.
No, I just want to respond to what had come up earlier in public comment. Um, I would love to be involved, but September's really packed, so if October is available, I don't, I would love to have a discussion with first our trustees to see if
Concur.
That's something that we would like to do, if it's something that we can use some discretionary funds for, for L C S O, our trustees, town staff, the community. Um, I support it one hundred percent. Yeah. Got it. Yeah, so maybe just looking at weather and having those discussions with the board, maybe at our a work session or whatnot to see if we do want to contribute funds, how much funds we want to contribute. I would love to do it, I think it'd be a blast, and I think it would be awesome um, for our L C S O and to drag um, John Fain this way again into our town, because he's kind of a hoot to hang out with. Yes, so I'll definitely get with Patty and Karen to figure out dates and possibilities and then
Yeah.
see what we can do about bringing it back.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay, so I was scrambling trying to figure out calendars for the Finance Committee and for the Board of Trustees, and I want to clarify now that I've got everything together, so the Finance Committee will hear the draft um, of the utility rate presentation at their September eighteenth meeting. Then we have a work session the following night with the Board of Trustees for utility rate presentation, just a work session around the table. And then we'll have first and second reading, want first reading on September twenty sixth with pub- public comment, and then October tenth with public comment and hopefully final adoption. So, wanted to, because I.
Is that feasible with staff time?
We shall see, I will, we will meet as a leadership team tomorrow to go over our agendas, and if there's a problem, if we feel like that's not a timeline we can meet, I will certainly let everyone know, okay?
Fair, that that sounds fine, yeah, just let us know, I think the thought process was, because we're literally being presented at the same day, is we, whatever information's going in our packet can just go in there, so there's, we're not preparing anything extra for them, they're looking at exactly what we're looking at. And then when we go to the first reading down the road, we can. Would it require a presentation?
Yep, so it would require having Bob or Megan at the meeting, so checking their availability, it is a busy, it is a crazy busy time of year, so let me check with them, I I want to make sure that the resident experts are there to to answer all the questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have any board reports. Sorry, didn't, sorry I didn't keep the meeting as tight as I normally do, but um, you know, nights like this happen, uh, we got another big one tomorrow, so um, guys rest up, drink your fluids, eat well, love you guys, good night. Um,
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
I move that we adjourn our meeting.
I second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Daily.
Yes.
Mayor Portem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Uh, yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I now adjourn the regular meeting time being ten oh four P M.
I'm in town tomorrow, I can come by here anytime and play musical chairs.